I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Tuesday, September 9, 2025. Just a reminder that this is a committee of the whole meeting and no decisions will be made here today. There will only be recommendations, so we'll go to our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, September 23, 2025, for consideration. A couple of reminders for today's meeting. Members of the media may sit in the upper balcony at the reserved media table. All other guests, please take a seat in the first floor gallery. If that is full, there is overflow seating on the second floor in the Victoria Room, where you will be able to see and hear the meeting. We livestream the meeting on our YouTube channel, and the recording is available after the meeting. We aren't broadcasting on Kajago this morning, but we will be at 1 o'clock this afternoon. Because meetings are accessible to the public, video or audio recordings by members of the public is not permitted in council chambers. This is to ensure that all attendees and those who come to make a deputation feel at ease. Thank you for your cooperation. I have a couple of notes before we get into the meat of the meeting. Just for council and staff, September 23 is Orange T-shirt Day, and there will be a fly grazing, and it's for truth and reconciliation. And Truth and Reconciliation Day, of course, is September 30. Also, September 23 council meeting, Deputy Mayor McDonald will chair it. I will be here, but it is part of our ongoing education for councillors and deputy mayors to be able to run both a committee of the whole meeting and a council meeting. I also wanted to make a comment on our 10-year financial plan, which has been out in the media, and it has been said that it is a tax increase. And I wanted to clarify that our 10-year financial plan is just that. It's a plan, and it speaks to the city's needs and its wants. It is not carved in stone, and it doesn't mean that there will be a 7% tax increase for the next 10 years. What it means is, when they put everything together for needs and wants, it comes out to 7% a year. Of course, in each and every year, council will debate the budget. There will be changes. It also doesn't take into consideration any grants or any other monies we may get, which would mitigate against that number. We will be putting out something on our website that explains more fully how the 10-year financial plan works for the city, and I think people will be more comfortable once they see it. And I won't belabor the point, but first and foremost, if we don't have a plan, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. So we are, this is a plan. It is not dictated, because this council or any other council can't commit a future council to a tax increase. It will be done on a year-by-year basis. So I wanted to get that out there. Thank you. So moving on. Can I get an adoption of the agenda as amended? Councillor Richardson, Councillor Warren, any comments or questions? I see none, all in favor? And that's passed. We have Councillor Perry and Councillor Yeo on Zoom. Councillor Dobell will be on Zoom later. He had an appointment and will be with us as soon as he can. We'll move right into deputations, and the first deputation is a request for council support for the proposed Sturgeon Lake Agrovoltaics Renewable Energy Project, and we have Mr. Robert Caputo from Compass Greenfield Development and Tom DeBoer. Gentlemen, you have five minutes.
Good morning, council and staff. Thank you. I do have slides for this meeting, so if it's possible to get the slides up on the screen.
I don't think we have them.
Oh, okay. Well, in that case, maybe I'll start with providing, does the time start now?
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. No, I think I'm good now. Thank you very much. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you again, council and staff. Thank you for giving us some time on the agenda. My name is Roberto Caputo. I'm here from Compass Greenfield Development to talk about the Sturgeon Lake Agrovoltaics project. With me is Tom DeBoer. He's from TD Consulting. He's been helping us with this project. I'll start with giving you a brief overview of Compass Greenfield Development and who we are. We were established through our sister company, Compass Energy Consulting, which was founded in 2010. We started developing projects in 2018 under the Compass Energy Consulting branch, following our last success in the last Ontario procurement. The president of the company, which is the president of both the greenfield development and the energy consulting, decided to create a business dedicated to being a long-term owner-operator of renewable energy projects. We have four solar projects that are currently in operations in Ontario. We have one best project that just came online two months ago through the LT1 contracts that were awarded, and we have two projects, two best projects that are expected to come online later this year. In Saskatchewan, we have three solar projects currently in operation and three solar projects in development, giving us about 500 megawatts of renewables as a business. Ontario's got an urgent need for new power. The ISO has updated their latest demand forecast, which basically shows a 75% demand growth by 2050. What's causing that demand growth is the industrial sector and data center growth, the growth of industrial electric vehicle production, commercial sector growth, increasing population and electrification. As a result, the ISO has launched multiple window procurements. The plan for Sturgeon Lake Agrovoltaics is to submit this project on the upcoming procurement deadline, which is October of this year. Why are we here in City of Coortas? Basically, the City of Coortas official plan does have a support for alternate energy supply sources that help reduce associated greenhouse gas emission, which is why we're proposing renewable energy, and then also it's supported by the city Coortas Healthy Environment Plan. There are several community benefits that come with this project. The two that I'd like to point out is we are offering $1,000 a megawatt AC in terms of operation, once the project goes operational, that would be paid on an annual basis, and then also an increased tax base as a result of the site being solar. So the land is located on Sturgeon Point Road and Blyth Shore Road. One of the requirements is that we are unable to cite solar projects on land designated as prime ag. So per the City of Coortas official plan, the site is in fact on rural designated land. I will say that the site, and we did share, provide an image of the current situation on site, but ultimately, one of the characteristics of this site is that it is well-screened. I think we did measure, one of the things that's important to point out is that we are about 500 feet away from our measurements from the nearest home, so there's great screening on the site. Naturally, we are planning to plant more trees as necessary to ensure that the site is well-screened. The other thing I wanted to point out is in relation to decommissioning. So it is our responsibility, of course, to decommission the site, but as a buffer, we're also posting a decommissioning security for the value to decommission in the event we're unable to. That will be calculated based on a third-party engineer's review. On this site, we are also hosting an agricultural component. As phase one, we're planning to host sheep on the site as well, and then part of phase two is working towards crop production as well on the site. We have an indigenous and community engagement plan. It's posted on our website. We also have submitted it for you guys as well. It is submitted as part of the package. I did want to mention that there is a project website. Also, there is an info email website for community public feedback. We did host a community meeting back on July 16, where we invited about those that were about 500 meters away from the site, so about 20 to 30 people attended the meeting. We have started outreach to the Williams Treaty in terms of First Nations outreach, and yes, that's that. I did want to point out that there are multiple stages to our ICP. We're currently in the first stage of that, which is implementing the things I just spoke about, and we're going to continue to work through indigenous outreach as well over the coming weeks. In terms of overall development timeline, one of the things I did want to point out as well is, at this stage, it is early-stage preliminary. We plan to submit this project as part of this upcoming procurement, as I've already mentioned. We expect to hear back from the ISO if we are successful on this project by April of next year. We'd expect at that time we'd commence municipal provincial permitting. We'd expect that takes about 12 to 15 months, which would bring us into 2027. We'd expect 12 months of construction, bringing us into 2028, so we'd expect this project to go commercial operation by 2028. One other thing I'll point out is we did do a preconsultation with planning at the City of Coortas, and so the requirements, OPA amendments and ZBA amendments are understood from our perspective in terms of next steps when we're progressing the project. So why we're here today is we're requesting, as part of this submission, we are required to obtain a council support resolution to be able to participate, so it is a prerequisite. And basically, what it is, is it's confirmation that you support the submission of our proposal that we've undertaken or plan to undertake indigenous community activities, and then the biggest part of it is that ensuring that we're not on prime ag as designated by your official plan, which this parcel is designated rural. With that, I'd like to thank you and happy to field any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, if you'd just stay there for a few minutes. First, we'll get a motion to receive the deputation. Councillor Warren, Councillor Richardson, all in favor? Okay. Now, Councillor Warren, you have a question?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for coming. You said that you envision more agricultural besides sheep. What would that be?
Yeah, great question. So the crop side of things is kind of like, the research is in early stages, and so some of the ideas I know that have been floated around are spices, things like garlic and other spices. So basically, it would be a crop that would, you know, be able to coexist, of course, with panels and, you know, that can survive with, you know, shading and in that environment. So we haven't decided yet, but that's a TBD. We'll work towards that as part of the phase two.
And you also mentioned that there was a community benefit amount. How much was that per year?
It was $1,000 a megawatt AC, so this project, we're currently expecting is about 13 megawatts, so about 13,000 per year, but then there would also be, of course, the property tax.
And that goes into the community?
Correct, yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councillor Richardson.
Thank you, and through you. Thanks again for coming today, and that was the one question I wanted to know is about that impact on community benefit when it came down to dollars and cents. One question, Will, is this project requires storage, example, batteries or backup systems?
No, just solar. Councillor Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. What is the land being used for now? Is it just being left fallow, or what's happening there?
Currently, it's being used, I believe, for soybean, I think. There is a lease with a farmer. I think he's using it to grow soybean on the property, I believe.
Okay, I thought you said it wasn't A1 land, though.
Just to clarify, the City of Coortas official plan is, that parcel is designated as rural.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Perry.
Thanks very much, Mayor, and thanks for the presentation. Just follow up on Councillor Joyce's point, if I could. So this land, currently, you were mentioning it not being, well, it being designated rural. Has it been classified currently as to classification of land in terms of its quality as farmland?
I don't believe it has, from my perspective. Obviously, I'm not a planner, but again, the designation as it currently sits per your official plan is rural.
All right. Just interested in the classification and to Councillor Warren's point and Councillor Joyce's point, the actual use of the land right now and its use as farmland and the production that's currently seen. You said the plan is to host sheep. Can you just let us know how far along that plan is for our consideration?
Yeah, once, sorry, and Tom wanted to maybe, I'll just answer the sheep question, then I'll pass the mic over to Tom DeBoer, who's also here. So we haven't started that process yet. You know, we want to make sure that we have a contract first from the ISO. It's a competitive process, and so if we do get awarded a contract from the ISO, at that point, we would, you know, commence that initiative, but ultimately, the goal would be to hire a local sheep farmer, so we'd have a contract with them to host sheep on our site, and I think Tom wanted to touch upon another point.
This is Tom DeBoer. Mike, the response regarding the first statement, whether the soil has been assessed, part of the preconsultation requirements, which will fall under the zoning bylaw amendment that is a requirement of this project should it be successful, would be an agricultural brief, and that brief will discuss what the soil types are, what the capacities are, and what the net loss would be, at which point that could be evaluated by staff and the members of the public during the zoning bylaw amendment process, which allows everybody to make an educated decision at that point.
Thanks very much.
Councillor Ashmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Caputo. Just a couple of questions. When you're proposing constructing the solar mounts, are you looking at scraping the top soil or leaving it as is? Because I'm familiar with these projects, living in between two of them, and I see how they're prepared over the years. Are you scraping the top soil before you erect the structures?
No. The plan would be, we're either going to be screw piles or driving piles into the ground, depending on the geotech assessment. As part of actually the ZBA process and OPA process at the municipality, we would, of course, conduct a geotech study and determine which method we would be using for the site, but there isn't a need to scrape the site as part of installing foundations for this. for this.
All right, thanks. And finally, um, as far as the construction, would, would you commit to, if, if this was approved, if potentially it was, would you commit to um, to constructing these, um, your materials locally here and hiring local trades?
That's, that's always a, 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 an important thing for us. Uh, we do uh, uh, want to ensure that we hire as many local trades as possible. Um, part of it is also, you know, working with our contractors to ensure that that exists uh and is competitive. So um, that's, that's the intention, but of course, we want to make sure, ensure that we're uh, uh, remaining competitive with our uh pricing.
Q, councillor Yeo?
Um, thank you and through you to the, to staff, I think. Um, just a question uh on the zoning. Now, rural zoning bylaw that's currently under appeal, this is actually zoned agriculture. So it might be zoned rural now, but whenever our appeals are over, it's going to be agricultural. How does that affect this going forward?
Who's your question to, Ms. Uh, Director Development?
I guess, I guess to the, to the, to the planners standing at the podium there. Um, like right now, it's rural, but um, in our rural zoning bylaw, which is imminent, it is zoned agriculture. And I think we probably got, we got rid of a lot of rural zoning in that, in that plan.
So why don't we let uh, Ms. Perry, uh, do you have any questions to the deputants right now?
I think my question would be, is like, how would, if it in fact was zoned agriculture a month from now, how would that affect your project?
Well, the decision's not going to be made till council. And I'm not sure that Ms. Perry would have the information right now. So we can get her.
I'm asking for the deputant's opinion, if it would change your opinion on the project if it was on agricultural land, which blows my mind that it's not. It's good enough to grow soybean, but, but it's uh, it's not good enough to be agricultural land. So I, I'm a little confused why it's, it's zoned rural, but that could have been something that happened uh decades ago. But um, we've gone through a few official plans, so I'm just, I'm, I'm confused, I guess. So I'm just asking for an opinion.
So let's get the answer for you between now and council. Is that fine?
I can respond to that.
Okay.
Now, that's fine, but what I'm asking for, Mr. Mayor, is would it change the deputant's mind if this was zoned agricultural right now? It's not zoned agriculture, but it's obviously agricultural land, but because the zoning is rural, they have every right to, to bring this forward. So would you, I guess the question is, would you be bringing this forward if that piece of land was zoned agricultural?
Do you want to?
Go ahead. Do you have an answer for that?
I do. There seems to be some confusions versus zoning provisions and designations within the official plan. So the official plan designates this land as rural, whereas the zoning currently, it's A1 in the Fennland Township bylaw. When we get the new rural zoning bylaw, that designation in the zoning does not change. So the province stipulation is it has to be within your official plan as rural, not designated prime agricultural within your, within your official plan. The zoning will need to be amended as part of the process, which has already been disclosed to our team vis a vis the pre-consultation process. With that comes the necessary studies, of which one is agricultural brief.
You got that, councillor?
Oh, yeah, I got that. So um, so yeah, I'll wait for Ms. Barry's answer and why our official plan doesn't line up with our zoning bylaw and uh, and I can wait for the council for that answer. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions for the deputant? I have a couple. Um, so when your solar panels are up and running and uh you can't feed into the grid for whatever reason, it, are your panels still producing electricity? And if so, what happens to the electricity?
So the, the panels are generating in the day. Uh, they're, they use solar, solar to create the energy. At night, they're not generating. Um, and the uh, the second part to your question, uh, sorry, what was the second part to your question? Do you mind repeating your second part to your question?
So i-if it's daytime and there's sunshine and, and you're generating electricity, but you can't feed into the grid, what happens to that electricity?
So the electricity that, that flows into the grid, it goes into the uh, gets distributed to the local Lindsay Transformer Station. And then from there, it gets distributed into the provincial grid and gets distributed to uh various parts of Ontario, hence why the ISO, you know, again, it, to, to help meet demand growth of the, the 75% demand growth, uh, there is alternate sources of energy being proposed uh through the ISO.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, when you can't, when your installation cannot feed into the grid, what happens?
Oh, it's, it's capped at capacity, so it's, it's designed to be capped at the maximum capacity of the site.
And then what would happen?
It, it, it wouldn't generate more than what it's allowed to generate uh at the site.
Okay, but there is, for whatever reason, you cannot feed into the grid during the day. What happened, but you're still generating electricity? Where does that electricity go if it can't go into the grid?
I, I don't think I understand the question. Maybe I can take that away and get back, but I.
Okay. Um, how deep in the ground does your installation go um if, if you're using pillars or posts to support it and not uh, uh, and not pouring a pad?
It's, it's about two to three meters deep into the ground.
Three, about three meters, so 10 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, we have a motion to receive the deputation. I think I was premature in my uh, asking for, all in favor? Thank you, that's passed. Thank you for coming today. Item 4.2 is a request for council support for a proposed renewable energy project in Kirkfield. Uh, we have Mr. Thomas Dean, the Director and Development for InterJEX. You have uh five minutes.
Um, as Mayor said, Tom Dean, Director of Development for InterJEX for Ontario. So you do have a paper copy of the presentation. I'm just going to use that to go through. Um, so first couple pages very quickly here. First thing about InterJEX Renewable Inc., we are a Canadian company based in Montreal. We are in four countries right now, Canada, the United States, Chile, and France. We uh do all forms of renewable energy and only renewable energy uh except for hydrogen. We have about 600 employees currently. Uh, we have about four and a half thousand megawatts uh under operation. We are a full, from the beginning of the life and development right here to the end of the life, we call it owner-operators. Uh, and our goal and where we make money is to be long-term owners of a project. We also have a long history of doing mutually beneficial agreements, both with the First Nations and the local communities on all of our projects. So specifically, what brings us here today, as well as mentioned, that the ISO is looking for 5,000 to 7,500 megawatts of new energy over the next four or five years, give or take. The first opportunity being October 16th for submissions for renewable energy projects. Slide number six just gives a visual representation of what was provided by the IESO in terms of the potential de-deficits by 2050. So why are we in Coortha Lakes? Coortha Lakes, the ISO has shown that the two transmission lines that we are looking at in Kirkfield uh have capacities of 150 megawatt each, for a total of approximately 300 megawatt. That's what led us here. Uh, with respect to the parcels themselves, we found uh as well that that was zoned rural general uh at the time, or currently. Uh, we looked there, it is currently being used for uh either vacant land or there's cattle on it uh as of right now. So about solar technology, um, we can dive into more detail if, if required. I would say between wind and battery storage is probably one of the least contentious uh forms of renewable energy uh out there. On page nine is um kind of the, the nuts and bolts of it. So this is, uh, project submission is being aimed at the 16th of October uh of this year. The project award, as was mentioned, is aimed for April of 2026. After April of 2026, to when we would like to start uh construction in um, call it January of 2028, would be a period of uh detailed environmental studies permitting uh both at the federal, provincial, and municipal level. So just to, to maybe reiterate here is that what we are requesting for today is not any type of final approval or sign-off on the project itself. Uh, we view this as the opportunity to submit within the RFP and to continue uh the studies going forward. So construction will take approximately uh one year, uh, give or take, with uh commercial operation being aimed at kind of the first of May 2029 for a project life between uh 35 and 40 uh years. So the total project max uh is 150 megawatts that we are requesting uh today, but it could potentially be smaller than that, given the land constraints, which I will uh touch on So uh page 10 has some um numbers attached to it. So for a project of this size, we currently have three parcels uh under uh land lease that have a total acreage of about uh 1,850 total acres. We have three more parcels under land lease that will help us go from the project location down to the point of interconnect, onto the transmission line. For the total area that we will require, uh approximately 770 acres or 41% of the land that we have under would be fenced in. The arrays or the actual solar panels will cover about 40% of that land, so that would be 290 total acres. So if you take a top-down view, the solar panels will be approximately two and a half feet off the ground, or uh, two and a half meters off the ground. And when they're laying flat, if you take a top-down view, uh, you will see 60% of the ground or 40% of the ground will be covered by panels. The uh amount of road that would be required is about eight kilometers, and with the width of the road, that would equate to 14 acres or 0.75% of the total land that would be used, with the substation area taking approximately 1.1 total acres. For the foundation um that we've done, so we've gone ahead and we have done uh onsite geotech uh analysis too. Uh, this land is, as, as you will hear later, it is uh, uh, potential Alvar land, which is a little bit of topsoil over limestone. So what we have found to be the most um, uh, the best foundation type for this are what they call ground screws. So that would most likely see uh each position, each uh post uh drilled, and then a ground screw of 1.5 meters being literally screwed into the ground. Um, the technology here that we are looking at are single-axis trackers. So it's a single line of uh posts with solar panels on either side that will tilt along one axis and follow the sun as it tracks from east to west. And there will be a transmission line required from uh the point of the project location down to the point of interconnect. Depending on the parcel is used, that could be uh anywhere from four to seven kilometers. On uh the 11th page is a bit of a project timeline, but it, it echoes what we heard before. So a municipal support resolution required prior to the 16th of October for submission. Uh, and then the notification, hopefully around April uh the following year. And then after that is, is when the project is essentially uh, um, quote-unquote, uh, official in the view of a contract. But it is not official and it is not approved for building on the environmental uh side at the provincial level through the renewable energy approval or with the municipality um through the building permits. With respect to the uh project funds and benefits, so we have proposed a little bit of a bigger uh site, so economies of scale, so we can go, uh, we're proposing anywhere from a thousand to $1,300 per megawatt. So a $1,300 per megawatt per year indexed for the life of the uh project could equate, if we're talking about 150 megawatts, to just around uh, just shy of $200,000 per year as a commitment. Um, we also know that in and around the area, there are a lot of uh conservation groups. The Carden Alvar is in that area. We've had a couple of discussions um with the conservation groups there. I will say that, that we have not yet met in the middle at all, as I'm, I'm sure you will here. But we are looking to propose um something with them to work forward, to work towards um figuring out how best to rehabilitate the Alvars. I think from our point of view, as was mentioned, we are responsible for uh decommissioning and remediation. As of right now, there is no clear uh cheap way to remediate uh Alvars. So our goal over the next, you know, 35 to 40 years in life of the project would be to be working within that group, with those groups, to define uh a process so that at the end of the life of the project, we can remediate.
Can I get you to wrap up, please?
Yes, sir. So page 13 just shows the renewable energy approval process. And then uh the last page that is probably worth noting, uh 14, is just talking with some of the ongoing works that we have done. So uh have some preliminary field studies done June to August, and then are currently doing a second uh phase now. Uh, towards the end of the month, we should be getting a second report on the quality of the Alvar there. So the last thing I'll say is that each, each and every project has at least one major issue, and I think for this project, something that we will have to take into deep consideration uh when looking at it is the effects on the environment and ensuring that we can work together um so that we don't ruin that space up there, which is valuable to a lot of people.
Thank you. I'll get you to stay there in case of any questions. I get a motion to receive the deputation. Councillor Ashmore, councillor Yeo. Thank you. Uh, questions, councillor Richardson?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again for coming today and presenting. Um, just a couple of questions. One, obviously, being the size of this um proposed site, will this one require the battery storage or backup system?
Uh, no, no, this is solar only.
Solar only, okay. And um with that community benefit being 200,000 per year, what is the, the, what is the life cycle of this project?
For sure. So um I would say operation date, most likely, kind of Q1 2029, give or take, when everything's up and running. And then uh count on, um, I say 35 years is probably the safe estimate uh for, for the life of a project once it's operational.
Q, uh councillor Yeo?
My apologies, I sound better on mute. Um, again, the official plan has this zoned as rural. Um, the upcoming zoning bylaw has some of the land zoned as ag coming up. Um, now this ag doesn't have soybeans growing in it. Um, it's, it's Alvar, it's grassland and, and uh has some cattle on it now, I do know of. Um, but it also has some EP land running through it, and it also has some aggregate extraction land. So um, will you be uh spacing some of this project on the aggregate extraction land?
Um, our goal would not be to. Um, however, I think that would be in, in conversation with the municipality here um as to whether you would want or not. I would say from our point of view, uh, we, albeit 35 years is, is a very long time, we do look at these projects as being as well intermittent and temporal, so they will go away. So we will not ruin the uh, the aggregate extraction opportunity in the future, if that makes sense. It would just be put on pause for the life of the project. And then everything.
Well, I believe that aggregate extraction is on pause right now, um, just due to logistics. But um, but seeing it's, it's already zoned for, for, for removal, basically, so I thought maybe more of the project would have been on that already uh, land that's already zoned. project would have been on that already, land that's already zoned for disturbance. And so if I'm looking at the maps and everything correctly, so most of the project would then be centered towards Victoria Road more, so kind of hug the east.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, the eastern edge of the property.
Correct, yeah. So there are three parcels that essentially kind of run north to south along that edge of the road.
Okay, thank you.
Go, Counselor Warren.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming. Have you looked at any other areas besides the Alvar?
Yes, we, I mean, in particular, I would say just like with Kowartha Lakes region in general, yes, we have. I would say generally that area, if you start going east, you start getting into the forested area and then Algonquin Park, you start going southwest and you start getting into prime agricultural land, which we cannot look at. So, which is why we ended up in that area. If we could go east of Victoria Road, we would. Unfortunately, the landowners were not interested at the time to engage. So we've spoken with quite a few different landowners in the area, and the ones that we are proposing here and that were in the pre-consultation packages were those that had expressed interest and signed with us.
And so before you went down this road, did you look at how special Alvars are and what kind of pushback you would have on that? Because I think also it's in our official plan to protect Alvars because it's a special type of landform.
Yes, I would say it would not be correct if I said we completely understood the pushback and how important it is to the groups that are here. I think from our point of view is through everything that would have to get done, the field studies in the near, in the future with the provincial regulations, I think that we could get to a point where these projects could coexist and there could be a net benefit to it.
Go, Counselor Ashmore.
Thank you through you, to Mr. Dean, thanks for coming. Just a few questions. We've sort of had a 10-year history of construction of solar projects in Kowartha Lakes, and I know that firsthand experience, but 10 years ago, across the road from me there, it wasn't myself, but it was neighbors that were asking. They went through the process and they put their comments. At that time, you put your comments online, but nobody really got much of a response. And then the company said at the time, the projects, the ownership has changed hands about three times since then. They would commit, and they said they were going to be putting berms and planting trees, but those promises were never kept. Like, if you have the neighborhood ask for these things, would you, I'm sure you would keep your promise that you would abide by these wishes that the people would ask. I know that the problem is that the reputation of the industries is maybe not the greatest in the communities. However, it is improving. And it's just that, it's just the trust factor, like that you have multiple owners. I'm not saying that you will be, but hopefully you'll be there and your company, but we've had multiple owners. And for example, the one next to me is owned by a company called Brookfield, and there's no more community benefit anymore. That's gone. So it doesn't get transferred to the next owner. That's one thing we should point out, that the community benefit, which was great at one time, but then the companies went into receivership, and then they were never, it was never, never kept up. But anyways, my last thing is that the manufacturing, we were promised that these were going to be built in Kowartha Lakes. Would you commit if you did get this approval, that you would manufacture everything, 95% of your material here? We have, we have lots of manufacturing capability here in Kowartha Lakes. Would you, would you commit to that right now?
If I'm 100% honest, I cannot commit to that right now. And that's just, just to be truthfully honest with you. I will say with respect to the panels themselves, and it is a contentious issue, and a lot of the panels at the cheapest come from China, and this is the truth. Now, the provincial government has set for window one, they want the lowest cost of energy, and they haven't put any restrictions on where components, materials are coming from. We think that in September this month, that there's going to be what was quote a provocative, something coming out from the government for what would be window two, which could dictate where certain components can and cannot come from. So if we cannot source components from China, the projects are still feasible in the future, they're just going to be more expensive.
Deputy Mayor McDonnell.
Yeah, I think through you, thank you for your presentation. Question exactly what Counselor Ashmore said, is that, you know, we're making commitments for 35, 40 years, I got a funny feeling I might not be around at that time, but, you know, where are the securities that when people keep on selling these things to the next person, is there securities in this project that we can put in there to say that these have to be done and security dollars could be put up to make sure these things are happening if somebody decides to go bankrupt or change? And my other question is, is that, is there any way we can get these parts from Canada instead of reaching out, as you know, as the tariffs?
I will say maybe the last question first because it's the easiest. I think for this window one, the short answer is, is no. And that's just, again, because we're playing within the bounds that the province has set for us. So in order for us to be competitive with any other, you know, proponent out there, we will have to source the same materials that they are on that one. Now, in terms of surviving obligations, kind of with community benefit agreements and everything like that, I mean, however much my word is worth saying that we are owner operators and that we are now decommissioning our first wind farm in the Gas Bay in the Eastern Quebec, so we have been, you know, long-term owner operator. So our goal is not to sell these things, our goal is to not do it on the cheap and then flip it. With respect to the legal obligations to surviving benefits, I think those can easily be written into the contracts between the project and city Kowartha Lakes.
Go, Counselor Perry.
Thanks very much, Mayor, and thanks for the presentation. Most of my questions have been posed already by my fellow counselors. Sort of call up on Counselor Warren's point about the Alvar, but not really understanding the amount of concern. What, you mentioned, you know, planning to protect or remediate the Alvar. You know, how far along is that planning?
It's not anywhere, quite frankly. I would say the plan here would be, if the project is successful, to work with those who will work with us for the life of the project, so that we create the solution for us when the project is at the life send.
Okay, good to know. And I do appreciate your honesty and your candor today. Thank you.
Go, Counselor Yeo, do you have another question?
I did, and a question to the deputy or to staff. Counselor Warren also mentioned that she thought this was protected land under our official plan. I think I beg to differ, I think this is actually designated by the provincial policy statement for extraction. So I think eventually when the Niagara scarpet runs out, they're coming for our gravel, and I think this is all zoned for extraction or designated. And if I'm wrong, I would love staff to tell me that, but I think that's why the push with the conservancy and to turn some of it into provincial park has been to protect it from the designation. But I don't know if the proponents are aware of that or if staff can correct me on that.
Director Barry, are you aware of anything along those lines?
Thanks for the question, Mr. Mayor, through you. To reiterate some comments from earlier in our previous deputation, I will underscore that there is a distinction between the official plan, land use designations, and the zoning bylaws, both the bylaws that are in effect today, as well as the proposed new rural zoning bylaw that is currently under appeal and is not in effect. Staff is currently preparing an information report for the benefit of information to council and to the community to identify and confirm all of the applicable land use designations and the zoning that is in place. So any of the rural or prime ag or aggregate distinctions in the official plan and any implementing zoning for that official plan designation will be in the information report.
You got that, Counselor Yeo?
Yeah, I guess the last part of that is, is our official plan is basically scrutinized by the province, and it has to align with their plans. So my query was, in the provincial policy statement, the land outside the provincial park and the lands owned by the conservancy, in the provincial policy statement, if you know, or if I'm wrong, they're designated for extraction. They're basically designated for gravel pits, are they not?
I don't know if you're going to get a fuller answer than you already have, so.
And, okay, so and then I would just like at some point to get that answer, maybe if you may not report that Director Barry was talking about, because we are at the beck and call of the province, so if we think we're going to change the use of a land without their blessing and it's designated in their statement, then let's not beat our head against the wall. But, so let's get the information before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, thank you for coming today. Can I get a motion to receive the deputation? Well, all in favor? Thank you. Next up, we have comments relating to the proposed renewable energy project in Kirkfield. Ms. Courtney Baker, Ms. Dorothea Hengard from the Koochichin Conservatory. Ladies, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, as you said, I am here today to offer thoughts on the proposed Interject solar farm in Carden. My name is Dorothea Hengard, and I'm joined by my colleague Courtney Baker. I'm executive director of the Koochichin Conservancy, and we are a charitable land trust whose members and donors focus on protecting nature for future generations in your area. Most of our efforts are focused on the Carden Alvar, and together with the Nature Conservancy of Canada, who are here today, Wildlife Preservation Canada, and Ontario Parks, we have permanently protected more than 15,000 acres of prime agricultural ranchland in Carden, and that continues to be ranch to this day. To date, our organizations have invested over 20 years in this effort. We've come to know the people of Carden, and as landowners, we're also now members of the community. This ranchland also happens to be a globally unique landscape, and the city of Kowartha Lakes is uniquely blessed to have this internationally recognized ecosystem within your region. The Carden Alvar has been designated as a key biodiversity area by the United Nations and as an important bird area of national significance, and is studied by academics from all across Canada for its very high biodiversity. Biodiversity is a very poorly understood word, but basically it is the thing that is keeping us all alive. It is diversity of plants and animals that pollinate fruits, provide pest control and nutrient cycling. Biodiversity is what provides us with essential medicines, and it has all the components necessary for clean air and water and for a stable climate. It is irreplaceable. Without it, we cannot live. It's also greatly at risk on our planet, and so wherever we have strong areas of biodiversity, it is our duty to our children to protect it. The Koochichin Conservancy supports the transition to renewable energy, but not at the cost of such high biodiversity. We attended the first Interjects meeting on June 26, and we were alarmed that this company was so far along in their planning, yet knew so little about Alvar. They held their second public meeting August 19. Despite the bridge being out at Lake Del Rimple and people being away on summer vacation and only three days' notice from us, 110 people packed into the Carden Rec Center to voice their concern. The people in the room included Birds Canada, the Ontario Field Ornithologists, Ontario Nature, an Interject shareholder, scientists who have studied the Alvar for years, and many other interested parties. It was enough to finally convince Interjects to scale back their project, but we remain concerned that they have rushed to create this project. Thomas mentioned that this is window one, and I think you often find this with new initiatives that the government has put out, that that first year is really challenging for people. They're scrambling to figure out what the initiative means, how to apply for it, and what's, you know, what's going to be needed, and they rush in. And what we have noticed is that they've yet not provided evidence that Alvar can be remediated. They've not undertaken the scientific monitoring work yet on the proposed parcels. They've not provided any concrete evidence of support from local First Nations. And according to their most recent mapping, we just do not believe that they have a viable project. And I've included a map that shows what I mean with your package, which was handed out today. After removing the areas that contain Alvar, the areas with high levels of species at risk, the wetlands and the forested areas, it appears they would not be able to generate the 150-megawatt project they are proposing, or even 100-megawatt project. There's just these little patches left, and it's inefficient for them to lay out solar panels in a way that'll be economically viable. So we urge you to scrutinize the evidence for their proposed solar farm very carefully. We can and must pursue renewable energy solutions without sacrificing globally rare ecosystems and the community benefits they provide. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Let's get a motion to receive your deputation. Deputy Mayor McDonnell, Counselor Joyce. Questions? Counselor Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused because the deputation says on our agenda here, you are to speak on the Sturgeon Lake Agriboltaex, but you're talking about the Carden Alvar?
No, it's the Carden Alvar. Our agenda was correct. 4.3. The Koochichin Conservancy, 4.3 on the agenda.
I stand corrected. Sorry about that, I was moving ahead too far there.
Sorry to disappoint you, that's what you were hoping to hear about.
That's why I was so confused, so. Okay, second question. You say that you're in support of renewable energy. So if not there, where would you propose?
I do think that there are some areas of our province left that are agricultural land, but don't have such high biodiversity values. I think that there's lots of cement that has, you know, there are huge cement footprints all over, all over Ontario that are just sitting dormant that could be used, there's rooftops. But we have seen viable projects in our area, and there have been other proponents that have come to us in the past and said, you know, just from the get-go, we're consulting with you, where should we not put this? And we have told them where not to put it, and they've gone away and we haven't heard from them again, and presumably they, some of those turned into successful projects. There are some in Carden that we support, like farther south off the Alvar. This one just happens to be right in the heart of that Alvar, and that's our problem. It's very, very highly biodiverse land, and they're just not making it anymore. It's a very, very rare and unique ecosystem.
Counselor Warren.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming. Can you tell us how much land that you have preserved in the Carden Plain?
Yeah, it's 15,000 acres. We're still talking in acres most of the time, sorry. And we've done that with our partners. So part of that is the Ontario Parks land, which we initially protected with the Nature Conservancy of Canada and then transferred to Ontario Parks. Nature Conservancy of Canada has substantial land holdings out there, and we've managed to create a portion- to create a portion of a corridor that runs north-south all the way up to Kiwi Two Wildland Provincial Park. It's one of the most successful private landowner initiatives to, for conservation in the province.
Just through you, just on that, the corridor, how would this development impact the corridor?
It's, thank you to Interjects for hearing the major outcry at the last public meeting and moving it right away from, directly adjacent from that corridor. That is a help, right? So, but now that it's over toward Victoria Road, you know, we're starting to get, get somewhere in the conversation, but the problem now looks like, what's left after taking out Alvar, wetland, et cetera? I don't know if they have a viable project, you know? And we're just getting the information so late, late in the game, like we haven't seen, we saw the mapping last week of what they're now proposing and, but they hadn't yet mapped it, we hadn't yet mapped out where all the sensitive areas were. When you do that, to lay out the solar panels, to actually see that, you know, down on paper, I don't know that it can be done.
Seeing no further questions, all in favor of the deputation? Thank you, that passes. Thank you for coming today and for your input.
Thank you.
Next deputation is item 4.4, comments relating to the proposed Sturgeon Lake Agrovoltaics. I'll get that down pat before the day is out. Renewable Energy Project. Ms. Christine Norris, no stranger to these chambers. You have five minutes, Ms. Norris.
Brings back some memories, being here again. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm Christine Norris, an adjacent property owner to 299 Sturgeon Point Road, representing the neighbors concerned about the proposed Sturgeon Lake Agrovoltaics, I spaced it out, Renewable Energy Project. We ask council denies the application and adhere to Council Resolution 2013-511 to reject support requests for industrial solar installations for land with Canada Land Inventory classes 1 through 4 and 5 and 6 if there is, was at least 6 inches of topsoil. Ahead of today, you received an essay by Taylor Chip Smith, a nearby resident and student who's here today. We hope it adds meaningful insight from the perspective of future leaders on the impact of this project. This year, the subject property produced approximately 200 metric tons of wheat, enough for about 340,000 loaves of bread. An average loaf of bread contains 16 slices and if each person consumes four slices a day, that will feed 1.36 million people bread for one day. And in reality, many more as most people don't eat four slices of bread a day. Additionally, 245 large bales of straw were produced, providing livestock bedding and contributing to organic fertilizer which enriches our soil, reducing the need for chemicals. A place to grow growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, August 2020 states, "The finite supply of quality agricultural lands that feed the region and beyond must be protected to ensure a vibrant rural and productive agricultural economy and secure, a secure food supply for future generations. With Ontario's expected growth population of 4.4 million in the next 27 years, protecting agricultural land and food supply is more critical than expanding energy supply. Challenges such as food import issues, higher shipping and fuel costs, world politics threaten our food security. This single farm's loss means Ontario loses a valuable resource for maintaining a safe and reliable food supply. We are also concerned about our water supply and quality. The farms and residential properties around the proposed site rely on well water. Blythe Shores and Sturgeon Glen are much closer than you think and depend on wells too. With vulnerable water resources and limited potable water, we carefully manage usage and prevent waste, especially during droughts such as this year. This land sits above porous limestone, beneficial for crops, but challenging for post-installation. Tens of thousands of port posts will be drilled or driven into the ground 2 to 3 meters deep across the 83-acre proposed project, which cannot be done without environmental and geological impacts. These include modifications to hydrology as limestone's high porosity is often associated with underground drainage systems. Construction activities may change existing groundwater flow paths affecting local wells and nearby wetlands. They may also increase, excuse me, erosion, loosening surrounding soil and generate limestone dust, further contributing to erosion and sedimentation in adjacent water bodies. Over time, sediment buildup could block water flow, leading to supply issues. If problems arise years later, who will cover the cost? Today, drilling a new well could well exceed $20,000 and that's if we can find the water supply. By permitting activities that may diminish or deplete our water supply, these actions pose a threat ourselves and to our livestock. We are concerned about the potential loss of water supply from installing solar panel posts and the reduction of productive farmland that provides essential crops. These risks, vital to resources, outweigh the project benefits when alternative energy solutions exist. The city incorporated solar energy on the rooftop of the building at 68 Lindsay Street North and we ask council remain committed to rooftop solar power. Instead of taking productive farmland for so, large solar installations, look at requiring new builds to have solar on rooftops. Since 2020, California has mandated all new homes have solar panels set up and the UK government will require most new homes to have solar panels by 2027. Our federal government is tackling the housing crisis, will build Canada homes, that is an opportunity to provide solar power. We ask you to remember, 340,000 loaves of bread, feeding 1.36 million people, basic needs for human survival, food and water, and remember Joni Mitchell's song, "Big Yellow Taxi." Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? They paved over paradise and put up a parking lot, or in our case, a large industrial solar installation. And City of Council, Coortle Lakes Council Resolution 2013-511. Thank you.
You, just hang in there a few minutes and we'll see if there are any questions. Can I get a motion to receive the deputation? Counselor Ashmore and Counselor Perry. Questions for the deputy? Counselor Perry?
Thanks so much and I especially want to thank the deputy for her Joni Mitchell reference here this morning. I just want to thank the deputy and the local residents there for, for, you know, I've met with a couple, Ms. Norris and I have chatted by phone as I have with a couple of other residents on this, on this matter. I guess I'd just like to ask just a question around, there seems to be some variation on how the loan, how the current loan, how the current land is zoned, planned agriculture is a class. Would you be able to speak to that from, from your understanding, Ms. Norris? And also maybe a little bit about, is wheat the primary product? Are there other products on the land as well? And would it, in your view, continue to be farmed if the project doesn't go?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, wow. Okay, so yes, there's the official plan, yes, there's zoning bylaw, there's also the Canada Land Inventory. It's not used as much now as it was before, but it was a study that was done in the 60s and 70s, which, well, government had a lot of funding, they, they did in-depth studies onto the quality of lands in the area. The lands on the subject property, they are class 1 through 4 and there is some 5 and 6 and they're called autonobe soils and they're called autonobe loams and dumber. Going much deeper than that, that's way beyond my knowledge. As far as farming on that land goes...
Understood.
I, I can tell you from personal experience, my husband rented that farm for quite a number of years. We've produced ourselves corn, grain and hay. That hay, the corn, the grain helped feed over 100 head of cattle. Different tenant farmer now, since he's had that land, he's produced beans, he's produced wheat, so it is in viable production every year.
All right. Thanks, thanks so much, I appreciate that additional information and appreciate the deputation today, thanks for coming.
You, Counselor Joyce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Same question to the other deputy, if not there, then where? We do need renewable energy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and nice to see you, Counselor Joyce. Solar top. We have a lot of rooftops, whether they're industrial lands, whether they're housing, parking lots. There, there's lots of land that's already in use for other things that could incorporate solar energy.
Thank you.
Counselor Ashmore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, Christine, thanks for coming. And you mentioned the Canada Land Inventory and that's, those maps, I used to study them when I went in the, in the land resource building there, Soil Science, Ontario Cultural College many years ago, and those were always the basis of every municipality and they still use them. Like they're, they go up to class 6 such as you mentioned and there's, there's production on up to six, class 6 lands. I mean, if it's ranchland or nowadays with no till, you can grow pretty decent crops of wheat and, and other, other crops as well, soybeans. So, I mean, yeah, thanks for pointing that out, so appreciate that.
You, seeing nothing else, all in favor? And that passes. Thank you for coming today and I hope your old man wasn't taken away in the big yellow taxi. Item 4.5 is comments relating to the proposed renewable energy project in Kirkfield and we have Mr. Dale Ledbeater. I'm sorry, miss. I was thinking of Dale Earnhardt, not Dale Evans. You have five minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and esteemed council. My name is Dale Ledbeater. I am a resident of Ward One, a professional botanist, a retired environmental consultant and the co-author of the flora of the City of Coortle Lakes. And I believe, if you don't already have one, the clerk has copies and for the fellows on Zoom, there will be copies for you as well. And I'd like you to look at page 12, which has the figure of what's known as the land between that sweeps across the city north of the Trent Severn Waterway. I'm really pleased to be here because I'd like to give you my rationale for why sanctioning a solar energy project in the Carden-Bexley area, another industrial development in the land between, is a very bad idea. This is the textbook that I had in 1972 at the University of Toronto, the Limits of to Growth. 50 years, more than 50 years ago, we were warned about the consequences of continual consumption of our resources and what would happen. We're seeing those effects now, had those terrible fires this, this summer. And they expressed a fear here that we can exist, but that existence is going to be so impoverished that we won't need it. And I believe that this application is part of that and we have an opportunity to avoid contributing to that decline. We're feeling those limits to growth in the City of Coortle Lakes. South of the Trent Severn Waterway, there's been so much that has been removed. The tree canopy coverage shows that so well as you go from south to north, the canopy coverage improves and improves and you can begin to see those connections forming that are so important to the whole ecosystem. You heard a lot about the Alvar, we all know that that's unique, it's special, there's only one on the planet. But it doesn't function as a system of discrete polygons as our Schedule II mapping shows, as you will see come forward from the proponent. It is a connected, complex landscape that facilitates the ebb and flow of flora both north and south and east and west. There are thousands of species that depend on these. We focus a lot on species at risk. There's up to 69 species at risk in the land between, but it's the thousands of common everyday species that I'm more concerned about, maintaining habitat for them. On page 11 of this flora, my co-author and I talk about the Burr Oak Savannah that occurs in Carden Township on Victoria Road, north of Curtis Road. It's a vegetation type that's been designated as critically imperiled, but it doesn't show up in our official plan. We've heard discussion today about the gaps in the official plan and inconsistencies between the plan and the zoning. This is what we need to fix before we go ahead with these mega projects. You'll hear that rare ecosystems and rare species will be spared during this application through the, the application of the Renewable Energies Act. Great act, you read it, it sounds wonderful, but it references acts that no longer function in the way that they were intended because recent events at the provincial government has weakened these acts to the point where you can pretty much play to slay, pay to slay Key, the province is not recognizing ecosystem services. We've heard too now talk about community benefits, which sound like a lot of money, but in fact, if you calculated the value of ecosystem services on these lands, the value of the carbon storage, sequestration, air quality control, water improvement, stormwater management, and not to mention the hundreds of thousands of dollars that come in through tourism every year, because these lands are what people come to see. These animals are what people come to see and we need to protect those. We know that there's huge value in these lands that is not being recognized by the province and only you and I have the power to deny access to these lands that give so much to our local community. It's time to recognize this area as being a vital part of the land between with all its unique flora and fauna. Within 10 kilometers of my home in Carden, in Bexley Township, actually, right on the edge of Carden, there is a licensed sand pit that's expanded, a sewage disposal pit that has expanded. NORAD is developing the Arctic Over-the-Horizon Radar Transmission Facility, so I have to go from here to that open house. I'm not denying it, I'm just going. The new quarry opened just to the west of Victoria Road, another quarry is just rest of that. And as I drove up Victoria Road yesterday on the way to my doctor's appointment, there's an, the initial exclamation for another quarry has just started, just this month. This is the symptom of the increasing industrialization of this landscape and it's just not an appropriate landscape to do this. Each project has effects beyond its footprint, each project contributes to cumulative effects. It is, in the extreme, it's death by a thousand cuts. So far, the moose still find their way, north, south, go past my place, on their way to Balsam Lake and they get north to Monk Road and beyond. The Lagerhead Schreik are on the, the preserved lands on the Carden, but they prospect just north of my house. Where we choose to set land aside is not necessarily where our endangered species choose to live into the future. We need to give them flexibility, it's really important. When I asked the proponent about cumulative effects assessment, he did not appear to know what I was talking about. The Renewable Energy Act references legislation, I said that, it never talks about cumulative effects assessment and so all of these different things that are happening, and I understand that the province is driving aggregates, that's a whole other discussion. In conclusion, the urgent need for renewable energy cannot be an excuse to ignore the biodiversity crisis that we are similarly suffering from. There has to be a balance. Our current legislation does not provide adequate protection for the critical features of the land between. To ask the city for a municipal support resolution is premature. There is not enough information on the table for that. is premature. There is not enough information on the table for that kind of a decision to be made. If you do decide, you are compelled, because we do want renewable energy. We're not saying that. If you feel compelled that you have to provide a municipal support resolution, require that it proceed with a terms of reference created locally that protects our community with input from Coortha Conservation, from the city, and from citizens who can help. The message from Limits to Growth is that man can create a society in which we can live indefinitely on earth if limits are imposed to achieve a state of global equilibrium and with population and production in carefully selected balance. It's time to impose those limits in Carden and Bexley. Time to avoid a worthless existence. Solar farms can move. Endangered ecosystems cannot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you just stay there for a few minutes. I get a motion to receive the deputation. Counselor Dobell, Counselor Warren. Any questions? Counselor Warren.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming, Dale. Can you maybe expand on just how unique our Alvar is in the world? You said in the world, we're the only one.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure. Alvars were a recently designated feature, kind of in the late 90s, they came into their own. They were originally designated in Scandinavia. There's a smattering of them there. Then there's a smattering of them in Ontario that reaches from Kingston all across to St. Joseph's Island at Sault Ste. Marie. And then it jumps over. There's a few in Wisconsin, and they've just designated one in Winnipeg, thanks to some graduate work up there. That's it. That's the total thing. However, of those Alvar, they are not the same. Each Alvar has a unique combination of flora and fauna. Alvars are an interesting mashup of species that followed glaciers north, that came up on the mountains, because you've got mountain species, you've got glacial species, you've got western species. And as the climate warmed, following the warming of the glaciers, some of these species remained. And the conditions on the Carden Alvar are unique. There is a unique regime of flooding and then super drought. And this summer was incredible. This summer was a control year, so a lot of the shrubs are dying. That's what's supposed to happen on an Alvar. And then it floods again in the fall. And in Carden, of all of the Alvars in Ontario, it has this unique assemblage that is just not repeated anywhere else. So if you remove that, there's no way to put it back. I was talking to a consultant who does work with the aggregate industry, asking about this business of mitigation and rehabilitation. And he said that, as far as he knows, none of the efforts to date have worked.
Thank you. Seeing no more. Counselor Yeo.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming today. And I was interested when you said you took a drive from Bexley and you saw this, the pits and the quarries and the septic fields and stuff like that. And to say, in another breath, you said that the government today is kind of responsible. But those things have been around for a lot, a lot of years, and many, many, many governments have passed this stuff. And so, don't want to put all the blame on the government of the day, because we've been fighting these things for decades. And the government, provincial government, which basically has the final say in many of these things, they recognize the land. They have ANCs and all that stuff around all this land, and provincial parks and stuff like that. But they're also well aware that a lot of this land, like you say, is zoned for aggregate removal and stuff, and stuff like that. So I guess, in your mind, you say, well, you have to start doing this, but we've been doing it for so long. So what, realistically, what's the next step? In your mind, what's, in your opinion, what's the next step to try and protect more of this land? And obviously, the easy answer is not to give this project a go-ahead, but that's just way too, that's low hanging fruit. Like, if you want to be serious about protecting this land, this is a small fry, this is this project. So what, Conservatives is doing a great job in protecting a lot of this land, but unfortunately, I don't think they're going to protect it all.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I understand the question, what's on the table for now is municipal support for this project. And then that goes to the Crown Corporation that deals with energy supply. And so, it's my understanding that if you do not give municipal support, then the Crown Corporation is going to know that the city is unhappy with the application for whatever reason. So we're not really dealing with the province per se. This is about energy supply and potential energy development. Now, this is not my area of expertise, so I'm not sure that I got it right, but...
I think what Counselor Yeo was asking is how do you protect the Alvar going forward? Not just from this project, but if you were looking at the long term and how it should be protected into the future. I believe that's what he was asking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the clarification. What I think, we need more information about the Carden-Bexley Alvar complexes. There's a lot there that exists but has not been documented. There's a little bit in the book that we put together, but this is just a list of plants and commentary. I know that through the cornerstone, oh, I've forgotten the name of it, that working with the aggregate industries in order to find that balance, because that's what we're talking about is balance here. I also know there have been ideas surrounding doing a secondary plan for Carden or for Bexley Township. I realize these are former designations. But a secondary plan in that area, based on an improved knowledge base, and of course, that's going to require some additional, at least consultation, to compile the information that we have. We have the Coortha Lakes naturally, natural heritage designation, which, by the way, shows a corridor crossing Victoria Road in the vicinity of the proposal. And so, that corridor would be broken. That information, it doesn't have a function in the official plan. I don't know how often, with respect, you could tell me how often is ever brought to discussions at council. So there's a lot of information that can be brought together to inform the functions of those areas. There's a lot of scientists doing research in this area. This can all be brought together. And I think that's a first step, is the inventory. And then have a look at it from a managerial point of view, in order to put better, or to achieve a balance between what do we need for natural heritage, and what do we need in order to facilitate the other functions that we want to go on on those lands.
Thank you. I have no more questions for you. So thank you for coming. And all in favor?
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. And that passes. Moving on to item 5.1, we have 43 pieces of correspondence noted regarding comments relating to the proposed renewable energy project in Kirkfield. Need a motion to receive that. Deputy Mayor McDonald, Counselor Perry, all in favor? And that's passed. We're now going to break until 1 o'clock. Counsel and staff, there's some lunch upstairs in the Weldon Room. Thank all you folks for coming this morning. As we said at the outset, no decisions are made here today. They go to the council meeting on the 23rd, at which time council will debate whether support will be given or not. And correspondents and your deputations are all part of the public record and will be taken into consideration by council to make their deliberations. So I thank you all for coming. And certainly, if you want to stick around and see what happens this afternoon, we'd be happy to have you. Yeah. Okay. So we're now on hiatus till 1 o'clock. Yeah, okay, so we're now on hiatus till 1 o'clock.
Good afternoon, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Just a reminder that this is a Committee of the Whole Meeting and no decisions will be made here today. There will only be recommendations that will go to our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Excuse me. Uh, for consideration. A couple of reminders for today's meeting. Members of the media may sit in the upper balcony at the reserved media table. All other guests, please take a seat in the first floor gallery. If that is full, there is overflow seating on the second floor in the Victoria Room where you will be able to see and hear the meeting. We live stream the meeting on your YouTube channel and the recording is available after the meeting. This meeting is also broadcast on Broadcast Live on your TV, Kajiko subscribers, Channel 10, HD Channel 700, and rebroadcasted on Wednesday at 9:00 AM and on Saturday at noon. Because meetings are accessible to the public in all these ways, video or audio recording by members of the public is not permitted in council chambers. This is to ensure that all attendees and those who come to make a deputation feel at ease. Thank you for your cooperation. Uh, for those folks just joining us and for the new folks in the gallery. Uh, we started our meeting this morning at 10:30 and we did the adoption of the agenda at that time, so we don't need to do that. Uh, but a couple of notes, uh, so that everyone is aware. September 23rd's council meeting is Orange T-shirt Day and there will also be a fly grazing. And it is to celebrate truth and reconciliation. Uh, September 30th is of course the official day for that. September 23rd Deputy Mayor McDonald will chair the meeting as part of our ongoing efforts uh, for education on deputy mayors. And I will be in attendance, but I will not be in the chair. While we're talking, we have had many emails about the presentation that took place uh, at the last council meeting on our 10-year financial plan. It has been touted that the 10-year financial plan says that there will be a 7% tax increase for the next 10 years. I wanted to make it clear that that is not true. The 7% that is alluded to in the 10-year financial plan is the wants and the needs of the city going forward. Each year, the council of the day will debate the budget. And a budget is not what sets the tax rate. The tax rate is set from a number of things. And as I said, the financial plan talks about needs and wants and it doesn't take into consideration um, any monies that we might get through grants or other things which would reduce that amount. So I wanted to put everyone at ease that we, that this council has not passed a resolution that taxes will be raised 7% for the next 10 years. Each and every year, the budget will be deliberated. Well, moving on into our agenda, we're doing, um, deputations today. Our deputant for 7.1 is not available, so we will move to 7.2 and it concerns uh, the condition of King's Wharf Road and Mr. Brian McMillan, uh, if you'd like to come to the podium. And you have five minutes, sir.
Yeah, hi, yeah, I'm Brian McMillan. Um, let's just switch classes. Uh, King's Wharf Road is in total disrepair. And as I've been talking to a couple of councillors, I had a list of areas that were really bad, like 838, King's Wharf Road. If you're going westbound, going down the hill, if you stay in your lane, your truck, like my pickup truck, I actually go sideways on the road going over that bump even at 70K and 60K. That needs to be smoothed out, but all these lists I have, things need to be fixed up on King's Wharf Road. If they were to do what they did, I was talking to this one lady here, um, what they did on, uh, Ski Hill Road. They chewed up the road and packed it down. And even though they had the orange marker there for just saying where they're going to put the orange line, if they did that, the King's Wharf Road, that would last quite a few years to put it to 2028 time they want to put, uh, the repair of King's Wharf Road on. So for me saying that, if they did that, all this patchwork on King's Wharf Road would be ground up, leveled out, packed down, and I wouldn't have this list of areas to say to you, even though I gave you the pictures, you can see how horrendous the road is. But if they were to do that to the road like they did on Ski Hill Road before they, uh, asphalted on top of it, that would make King's Wharf Road viable for vehicles and we have illegal trucks going there. I'm watching the Armorstone trucks, which are not supposed to go down there. A few times they scoot off by there. We've got Elo Martin's, um, logging trucks coming in. I don't know if he's over five tons per tonny, you know, per axle. So I don't know, like, there's no weigh scales there. So I just know that this road is not made for these heavy vehicles. And we need to beef up, I know it's a B-grade road, but we've got school buses going down there. And that's tantamount for having a smooth road because they can easily bounce around. We had the hydro truck this year go off into the ditch because the road wasn't safe. It slid off into the lake, uh, the swamp area on, uh, Chief Factory or King's Wharf Road by the bridge there. So, and I've watched them, even when it was flooded and you had the barriers up there, the guys moved the barriers out. People go around it. I watched school buses going down there. I went there in my pickup truck because I'm high off the ground, I went through it too. But I'm watching a couple of school buses at different times go through there with kids on the bus. That's not safe. And the way it is right now, if we were to wait for this spring coming up, if it wasn't repaired in some form or another, it's going to be torn up because it was really torn up this year with the heavy ice and the high water. It was really high this year. We were to have that again, this road's going to be gone. So all I can suggest is doing what they did on Ski Hill, grind it up, pack it down. And Bob's your uncle, Charlie's your aunt, and the road's good for a couple of years. That's the cheapest way out of it I can think of. Um, basically, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Just stay there for a minute in case there are questions for you. Um, I get a motion to receive the deputation. Councillor Ashmore, Deputy Mayor McDonald. Uh, questions, Deputy Mayor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you through you. Thanks, Brian, for coming today. I had the opportunity to drive that road on Sunday for another individual, so, um, I see your concerns and, uh, in a couple of weeks, uh, when it comes to council, uh, it'll be discussed. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Ashmore. Use your mic, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, um, through you to, um, Brian, thanks for coming and thanks for the pictures. And I want to thank Zoe and, uh, Sarah for putting all these photos together, a lot of them, and distributing them to council. Um, yeah, like, I'm quite familiar with this road. I lived on that road for almost 50 years and I know that, um, it's a 10-kilometer road. Um, just recently I put a task force memorandum to the, to the task force. Um, it's beyond the point where it needs a study. We know that it has to be done. Um, it is a big road and it has different situations along it. Um, some of the road, we'll talk about this in two weeks. I think I'll put forward a motion of some sort to staff. Um, some of it may have to be pulverized and done in sections, but it really needs to be done. Like, it's, um, it really can't wait till 2028. Um, it's at the point where, um, it's, it's very, very treacherous, especially, uh, west, east of the, of the King's Wharf Bridge. So, um, I guess, like I said, to Brian and to people that today, we're receiving Brian's report. And it, it is actually in the, uh, the roads plan for 2028, but hopefully we can move it up within another year or maybe two years, but we'll see what we can do, like, we're going to work hard at that. But, um, I think it's really imperative that this road be, be, be looked at because it is really, really getting to the point. It hasn't been done since 1993. That was the last time any, any work was done on it of anything major proportion. So, um, thank you for coming and, um, certainly put something together for next, for two weeks from now. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? Can we have King's Wharf Road from Alvin's Lane to Pigeon Lake Road be added to the repair? Because my area is pretty bad, dude.
Yeah, thanks through you. Um, there was an omission in the, um, in the, uh, in the booklet there for, in, in the 2028. And it said from Heights Road to Alvin's Lane. Well, King's Wharf Road goes from Heights Road in the west to Pigeon Lake Road in the east. But, uh, Alvin's Lane is a, is a road that's about But, uh, Alvin's Lane is a, is a road that's about three-quarters of the way, so we're missing a quarter of the, of the road, um, in that description for the budget, tentatively, twenty-twenty-eight or earlier, hopefully. So, you're right, yeah, that was maybe a typo or something, but it should be from Heights Road right to the very east end of it, which is, um, well, actually, the very east end is, goes into Lakeview Estates. So it has been done, the very, very east end. Everything east of, um, Pigeon Lake Road, but from Heights Road to Pigeon Lake Road has not been done. So I'll put something together, and we'll work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm okay to go?
Yep, thanks for coming.
Very kind of your time.
All in favor? And that's passed. Moving on, our next deputation is seven point three. It's a request for speed limit reduction on Coortha Lakes Road forty-six, Balls Over. We have, uh, Eileen Shapiro and Bruce Ralph. You have five minutes.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for allowing us to chat with you today. Our topic is the growing concern of traffic flow through our community on County Road forty-six at the intersection of Highway forty-eight just to the south. We've been living at that intersection for just over a year now, and we are increasingly concerned about the traffic on the road. There are dangerous speeds at which vehicles are traveling as they approach and depart that intersection where there is a posted stop sign. There is a total lack of patrol presence to curtail any speeding through enforcement in the area. With winter approaching, bringing with it deteriorating road conditions, and, um, an increased potential for traffic accidents unless that speed is reduced and enforced. Our request for action is summarized as follows. We request that the speed limit on County Road forty-six be reduced from eighty kilometers per hour to sixty kilometers per hour south of that intersection for a distance of about three kilometers. We'd like signage posted to inform drivers of the change, as well as driver information signage to help drivers self-reduce their speed. We'd like to have an increased police presence for traffic control, especially on Friday and Sunday evenings when cottage country traffic volumes and, uh, are very high and the speed is really fast. And we'd like to post signage to minimize the use of engine braking. We've all witnessed a growing concern across the region of speeding and careless operation of motor vehicles resulting in fatalities, loss of wildlife, and damage to property. We've already tried writing a letter and have spoken with the Works Department. The reason given for it being eighty kilometers an hour is that County Road forty-six represents an arterial road, and we're not disputing that fact as it only reinforces the importance of having the speed reduced because of the high traffic volumes. Our concerns only multiply when we think of the winter months approaching, and the deterioration of driving conditions makes it even more important that we take action and reduce the speed limit. To support and reinforce our position, arterial roads like County Road forty-six were established back in the seventies and eighties as a means of moving traffic through non-populated agricultural areas. Speeds respected that areas at the times. Trucks were smaller, loads were lighter, and cottage country and commuter traffic had not yet seen a big increase. Currently, though, the communities have grown, but the road setup there has not changed. Traffic has doubled, tripled, perhaps even more through that area. County Road forty-six is rarely controlled for speed enforcement. We never see a police presence in that area. Vehicles have gotten a lot faster. Trucks are larger, hauling pup trailers heavily loaded with dirt and gravel through that road. As an example, a fully loaded gravel truck weighing on average forty to sixty thousand pounds needs an adequate time and distance to come to a safe stop, five hundred and twenty-five feet according to some highway studies. Should somebody pull out from their driveway, cross the road to collect their mail, walk or walk, walk their dog or ride their bike at the roadside, we're worried that that stopping distance is not enough. We have found sometimes perilous to pull out of our own driveway to merge into traffic going a hundred or a hundred and ten kilometers per hour on our road. Moving out of our gravel driveway, it's not possible to accelerate that fast. And we've all had incidents where we've signaled our intentions to turn into our driveway and some, have somebody following too closely and had several near misses, cars swerving around us to miss us. It's pulling into our own driveways become a perilous adventure. Trucks hauling heavy loads and traveling too quickly coming up on that stop sign use their engine brakes for stopping, causing our home to shake and reverberate. It's disruptive and intrusive, but we think it can be alleviated with postage, with, with signage, so that truckers know that there is a home there, and perhaps would reduce the use of their engine braking. To reinforce our points, we've surveyed some adjacent and other roads in the Coortha region. There are many comparable roads to County Road forty-six already with lower speed limits. A couple of examples are Argyle Road approaching County Road forty-six, where it drops to sixty kilometers per hour and then forty, and that's in all directions. Highway forty-eight in Balls Over drops to sixty kilometers per hour approaching County Road forty-six and thereafter. There are several other examples. They can be seen in the, in the handout, I won't go through them. But many of the areas are comparable with only one house in the vicinity, and the speed limit is sixty kilometers per hour. These areas, we don't think have seen a traffic delay, so we don't think that reducing the speed limit to sixty in that stretch in front of County Road forty-six where it intersects with forty-eight will reduce the speed, will reduce the flow of traffic significantly. In closing, that's what we're asking for, is a reduction in the speed limit for three kilometers south of that intersection where the stop sign is at Highway forty-eight and County Road forty-six. Provide a police presence for, in busy times, and post signage informing drivers of a speed limit change and signage informing them to minimize the use of engine braking. We'd like to see consistency shared at both ends of County Road forty-six as well as across the region. Thanks so much for listening, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. If you'd just stay there for a minute, uh, there may be a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, can I get a motion to receive the, um, deputation? Councillor Yo, Councillor Dobell. Um, Councillor Warren, you have a question?
I do, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming and letting us know what's going on there. Um, have you registered, uh, a complaint with the OPP?
Not yet.
We have not done so yet. We were, our rationale on that is that we were hoping that we would be able to inform them, to enforce a speed limit of sixty kilometers per hour. While we were in this process, we didn't want there to be confusion or misinformation to be enforcing a posted speed limit of currently eighty when we're hoping for it to be sixty. We certainly are absolutely willing to talk to the OPP. We were just doing it in a sequential manner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Richards.
Thank you through you. Thank you very much for coming and exposing what's going on. I just, on the same lines, the OPP does have an online reporting tool now, and it's data-driven, and you can put in driving complaints. It goes to our local area, so it kind of flags that there's an issue in the area, so patrols can be added to that area. So I do encourage you to go on and, and provide the OPP with your issues.
Uh, use the mic, please.
Is it possible to get that link forwarded to me so that I know the website to go on?
All you have to do is Google OPP online reporting.
Okay.
Uh, having no more questions, uh, can I get a... Oh. Councillor Perry.
Thanks very much, Mayor, and, uh, just briefly, I want to say again, thank you for the, for the presentation. Um, yeah, this is the number-one issue that a lot of us are encountering now with speeds, um, from constituents, and so thank you for bringing forward more, um, matters for attention. I just want to make sure we include the one thing that's often missing, and that is, the most effective way to stop speeding is for us to drive slower. And that's a message and a means of personal responsibility for driving slower. It's frustrating, and I hear your frustration, and I share it. Signs, reduced speed limits, speed traps. We're trying all of these things, and to not very positive results from what I'm hearing from our, uh, from my constituents, anyway. So we really have to make sure we include messaging to our residents, to our neighbors, and myself, first among them. We need to slow down to fix this problem. It's a, it's an issue of taking care of each other and respecting each other. And I just want to make sure I added that frame to the presentation, and thanks again for the specifics.
Thank you. All in favor? And that's passed. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Item seven point four is a request for the installation of metal grates surrounding trees in downtown Lindsay. We have, uh, Ms. Melissa McFarland and Mr. Steve Podolsky. You have five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, my name is Steve Podolsky, and I am, uh, here on behalf of the Downtown Lindsay BIA as the Board's Vice Chair and Chair of the Beautification Committee. Um, with me today is Melissa McFarland, who most of you know, who she is our Executive Director. Um, we're here to share our concerns and recommendations about the streetscape tree pits in the downtown reconstruction area, particularly on Kent Street, Lindsay Street, William Street, and Cambridge. First, just a, just a quick recap of where we are. During our recent downtown reconstruction, rubberized mulch mats were installed on the Kent Street tree pits only. The understanding was that the design was aimed to address weed control, mulch containment, uh, level the sidewalk edges, and overall aesthetic appeal. Initially, they looked very tidy and worked really well. However, over time, several issues have emerged. Underneath the mats, there is never enough filler, um, material, and that settles over time, so the mats have sunk. This requires lifting and refilling, which is costly and labor-intensive to the city, and this issue will likely be ongoing. In some places, the mats have sunk below the sidewalk level, creating trip hazards. Anytime a tree requires a replacement, it involves cutting and reinstalling the mats, which adds to the cost and reduces the tidy appearance. Unfortunately, um, excuse me, unfortunately, a separate mats, which adds to the cost and reduces the tidy appearance. And unfortunately, a separate but related issue, many of those recently planted trees are struggling or never thrived at all and need ongoing replacement and maintenance. By contrast, the installed tree pits on the phases of reconstruction for Lindsay Street, William Street, and Cambridge were left open and only mulched with loose wood chips. This approach places a much heavier maintenance burden on our organization, uh, which includes regular weeding, a constant purchase and installation of mulch, but it also does not match the visual quality of Kent Street. This creates a lack of visual cohesion, in our opinion, for the downtown, and has led to some discontent from our membership whose businesses are on the streets and about why their sidewalks did not receive the same treatment as Kent Street.
So it is our understanding that there may be some concerns from various municipal departments, including Public Works, Parks, Engineering, and Legal, about liability, maintenance costs, and long-term sustainability. We anticipate that some future recommendations from your staff may suggest removing the mats entirely. We are not opposed to that idea, but we're concerned that leaving the open pits with the loose mulch on Kent Street would lead to weed proliferation, mulch displacement by wind, and safety hazards, issues that we're seeing elsewhere in the downtown. Our proposal is straightforward, to adopt and install metal tree grates throughout the downtown core. Uh, why metal tree grates and what design? We've done some research. In the report that was included in your agenda packages, there are some images. Uh, we're looking at a two-piece grate that has a central opening for the tree, which allows for easy removal and replacement of the trees when required. Uh, this design would support our ongoing watering and weeding efforts and would benefit the trees that are currently having trouble thriving. When properly installed flush with the sidewalk, the grates would eliminate pedestrian trip hazards, improve pedestrian safety, and well-aid in snow removal. The metal grates are durable, long-lasting, and will maintain a tidy appearance for decades, making them a more cost-effective and sustainable long-term solution. Our recommendation for implementation and next steps, if this is to be approved, uh, would to be install the metal tree grates at every tree pit in the Lindsay Downtown Reconstruction Area for a consistent streetscape, and that while we do recognize that the upfront investment is not insignificant, the long-term benefits, including reduced maintenance costs, improved safety, and enhanced aesthetics, would make it worthwhile. The investment that has already been made into our downtown, which we are eternally grateful for, shouldn't just be abandoned when a significant element of that streetscape turned out to not be a sustainable solution only a couple of years later. We also request the development of an official inventory and replacement plan for all existing and future downtown trees that could be coordinated with the grate installation. The plan should include provisions for tree replacements needed during that upgrade process, and at the time of this deputation, we have identified twenty-six of the hundred and one trees downtown that are in dire need of either serious intervention or full replacement, which is a lot. Uh, so in conclusion, uh, investing in downtown Lindsay's future means moving from temporary piecemeal solutions that were an inevitable result of a large reconstruction project to durable, long-term infrastructure. The metal tree grates would meet that need by improving safety, aesthetics, and sustainability while limiting ongoing maintenance costs.
And, um, lastly, um, we respectfully ask that you consider this recommendation in the upcoming budget discussions and refer it to the appropriate staff for review and input. Our staff liaison with your Parks Department has been an invaluable resource to us, and we're grateful for her attention and expertise. However, we also request that other relevant departments be engaged as needed to move this project forward. Uh, thank you again for your time in supporting the vitality, appearance, and, most importantly, the safety of our downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just stay there for a couple of minutes. I have a motion to receive the deputation. Deputy Mayor McDonald, Councillor Dobell. Questions, Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yeah, thank you through you. Thank you very much, uh, Melissa and Steve, for your, uh, your deputation today. Couple of questions there. Do we know, um, if the cause of the mats are killing the trees? Do we know that?
Uh, we do know, uh, and again, not our area of expertise at all, but you have, uh, very knowledgeable and talented, uh, horticulturists in your Parks Department who sit on our Beautification Committee and have been, like Steve said, a really great resource for us. Um, they're certainly not the best option, uh, for the trees you'll see. Among the ones that are down there, a lot of them have, uh, we, a certain number of them were replaced in the springtime. Like I said, at this point, there's twenty-six that need more. Some of them may have been an issue right from the time of reconstruction. The caliper of the trees was probably never strong enough, uh, and probably should have been flagged at the time as not being, you know, quality enough to have gone out. Um, but they're certainly not, uh, the, the best option for the growth of trees overall. So we're looking at replacing, uh, the ones that need to be replaced, but we think that those tree grates would be a better option uh, for the life of the trees in general, is what we're being told.
At the beautification, as it talked about, these mats, are they, were they installed properly? And, uh, what?
The mats were fantastic when they were first installed. Like I said, they, they looked great. They keep that mulch really contained. They were even with the sidewalk. We thought they were fantastic. Our only complaint was that the entire downtown didn't get them. Uh, so on Kent Street, they looked fantastic. We thought they were wonderful. It's just over time, we're realizing that as a long-term solution, they, they probably were not the best choice for all of the reasons that we've outlined.
And my last question is, we used to have old grates there. Do we know if they're still around?
That would be probably a question for your Public Works Department.
They are, they are not.
They are not, and they probably wouldn't be the same size, anyway. I know the tree pits have, uh, various sizes. I'm hoping that most of them are a standard size, at least a couple of different standard sizes, but the tree pits are a different shape and size than they were previously.
Thank you. Councillor Warren.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Did you look at, um, permeable pavers? Anything like that, where the water can actually seep down and actually would probably be better for the tree?
Um, we, we didn't. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't our, specifically our reconstruction project. So this was put forth, um, I'm assuming through, through Mr. Rojas's department um, and the consultants when they designed the, the streetscape. So I'm not sure what other considerations were, were considered for those at the time, but again, they seemed great at the time. So, um, I don't know if there is a better option, which is why if this was referred back to staff or their expertise, that would be great, 'cause maybe there is an option that we haven't considered either.
Councillor Joyce.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. Not really a question, just a, uh, an observation. Uh, you talked about we, labor-intensive weeding with the mulch. I don't think that goes away with the grates. You'd still have weed-intensive, or labor-intensive weeding with the grates too, I believe.
Yes, um, and, and we know that because we do, we had the grates, um, in the, in the old style. Um, the issue I think that we're, we're finding with the tree pits is that we, the open tree pits that exist now, uh, on the side streets of downtown, is that even with that weeding, they still never look great. So, uh, we could be on it all the time where the grates would seem to keep them a little bit at least more contained, um, and that we could still do our regular amount of weeding, but at least when we do that weeding, it'll still look nice, which we're finding with the open tree pit, they never do.
Thank you. Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, and through you. Maybe just an observation as well. Um, traveling down the downtown, looking at the size of those mats, they're quite large and probably the footprint is larger than actually what you need to for that tree. Um, in your research, did you also look at, um, the removable growth rings that you can use for, um, downtown plantings? Because they provide that barrier of protection, allows for moisture to get through, and then also helps with that, uh, that weeding component.
Yeah, it wasn't something that was, um, brought to our attention. So the, the recommendation that we have, um, is, is the only consideration that we have made, but are completely open to any, uh, recommendations that may come forward from staff who may have a better solution for us.
Yes, because that could be a combination of the existing footprint and then adding in these growth, um, removal rings. That would probably work better, um, as a combination, just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ash.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, Steve and, uh, and, uh, Melissa. Um, just, um, a question on, on the, on the photos there. One of the photos that shows that you're protecting, the whole idea is to protect the tree and make sure it survives and has a long life, but, um, you have protection on, on the trunk itself. Have you ever had to use or would envision using protection? They're still young trees to, to protect the trunk because, you know, you have people that are still putting their bicycles beside it, they're parking their bicycles, and they know that there is a bicycle, there are bicycle racks, but they still, not everybody, but you see that still and also the salt, uh, you know, it gets into it as well, which doesn't help. But would you be looking at something else that would also protect the trunk of the tree?
I believe it's the, the first photo that you're looking at. So that's a, that's a gator bag. Um, so those were a number of trees that were placed just in the springtime, um, through one of your departments. Um, and I think, my understanding is that like that's for watering, right? So additional water can be added to the bag so that it gets sort of a slow release of that water, uh, into the tree while they're still young. So I believe it is meant to be a temporary solution until they're a little bit hardier. Uh, we are hoping to see less use of the trees as bike racks now that the bike racks, uh, have been installed, uh, just a few weeks ago, um, because it, you're right, it's not great for the trees at all. So again, if there is some sort of option that can be, you know, presented back to us by staff who probably have more expertise than we do, uh, in, in the solutions that may be out there that would protect the trees, that would be one of our, our priorities for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, can I, uh, all in favor? And that passes. Thank you very much for coming today. Our next deputant is Jackie Halliwell, speaking to the road conditions at the intersection of Hazel Street and Pavilion Road in Thorstonia. Good afternoon, Ms. Halliwell. You have five minutes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm Jackie Halliwell, a resident of Thorstonia Park, and I'm here to bring an ongoing issue concerning a sinkhole in our community to be discussed among council. I have been lodging complaints about the sinkhole at the stop sign of Pavilion Road and Hazel since 2019. There have been several inquiries to our counselor, Ron Ashmore, as well. I have a case number from 2020, 114960, and again in 2023, 160541, when the sinkhole was patched over with cold patch originally. Then, when it was, uh, then when again it caved in 2023, they paved over it. The hole was back again this year, and I lodged a third complaint to which I didn't receive a reply, but again, it was cold patched over and is already beginning to sink again. This is not a pothole. The road is eroding underneath and causing the hole to become deeper as years pass, definitely affecting the integrity of the road. There is a culvert there that runs into the lake, and during heavy rains, the road floods in the past, as I've shared a photo. It has also flooded homes' crawl spaces in the vicinity. I feel that this Band-Aid is an ongoing open wound and that the amount wasted on the nil repair that doesn't fix a bigger issue seems to be redundant. This road issue has been ongoing for six years now, and I ask you today, please consider fixing it correctly before it costs not only a proper repair, but a continued patch job that isn't sufficient to address the sinkhole that is nothing like a pothole. I personally have filled this hole over the years with sand, as a small child's foot could go right into it. A quick Google search states a sinkhole should never be patched. It requires proper repair to address the underlying issues and prevent further collapse or damage. Patching only covers the surface and doesn't fix the reason why the sinkhole formed, which is often a void or instability in the ground beneath. Professional assessment and repair are crucial to ensure safety and long-term stability. We know this area has been a real issue when we've had heavy rainfall in the past, and continually patching over a larger problem will contribute to larger costs in the long run. It is frustrating while taxpayers are on the hook for these new capital levies presented for new infrastructure while our current is extremely aged and dilapidated. I trust a solution will be brought forward, as I don't feel the innate response from city staff that they are meeting minimum maintenance standards are actually being met. While I understand that cold patching does save time and resources, this isn't the place to do so. It is frankly a bit of an eyesore as well, being adjacent to a public dock and boat launch, not to mention a high-traffic area. We were told when residents nearly lost a hundred and forty of their dock spaces during the new dock proposals, that they would need removed to resurface Hazel. Residents one kept their docks, and the road never did get resurfaced after all. So I ask too, as I've not been able to find anywhere, that it says that it's budgeted to be resurfaced if the city plans to fix the ongoing drainage issues on Pavilion and Hazel that caused this sinkhole problem in the first place. Thorstonia Park was last paved before amalgamation, well over twenty-five years now. We are certainly due for infrastructure work and new paving. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to a decision in the near future at your next council meeting in two weeks.
You want to stay there for a couple of minutes in case there's questions? Just hang on?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, I have a motion to receive the, uh, deputation. Counselor Ashmore, uh, Counselor Richardson. Any questions for the deputant? Counselor Ashmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you and through to Jackie there. Thank you very much for coming today and all your work in monitoring this situation over the years. And as, as you mentioned, um, we've got a five-year, actually six years on the go here, this, this situation. And as the, uh, the photo shows, there's a, there's a large cavity underneath, and, um, I'm not quite sure how that makes, meets the minimum maintenance standards, but anyways, it's, it's a repetitive thing that's happening all the time. It needs to be repaired. Um, it's, it's, something has to be done permanently to prevent this from happening again. So I, in two weeks, um, I'll put a fourth emotion of some sort that will, uh, start the process of getting this remedied for good and have it repaired. And so we won't have to be coming back all the time because something has to be done here because it's, uh, it's becoming treacherous for the people there and it's a liability in the making for the city. And not to mention what the people have to go through every day when they travel there and just be afraid that there, one of these days a vehicle is going to sink right through or a person, um, as well. So anyways, thanks, um, thank you, Jackie, for coming and all the work you've done on behalf of the community. I know what may seem like a small, little thing, it's isolated, but when you mentioned that about the whole Hazel Street, um, this is an important aspect of it because this has to be, uh, rectified before any major, the rest of Hazel Street is reconstructed, which it will be done. But again, thanks, and, um, two weeks from now, I'll have a follow-up motion of some sort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I'm able to just say something quick on that as well, um, yeah, I, I really look forward to seeing it, uh, dealt with because as it does seem like it's a small issue, it's a bigger issue further up the road. So it causes the drainage issues that happen at the top of Pavilion and Hazel. You've witnessed it yourself, Ron. Um, they cause flooding into houses lower below. We also ended up having to have the city come with large excavators last winter, and, um, where there's a bus stop right at, uh, Silver Birch and Pavilion, it, it froze up so bad with ice and water that an excavator had to come and chip away at all the ice because the city snowplow couldn't get through there. So I know that it's definitely a larger drainage issue that's happening, um, down at the corner of Pavilion and Hazel.
Thank you. All in favor? And that's passed. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
You too. Moving on, uh, to item eight, which is correspondence. Our first piece of correspondence is a request for resurfacing of Beechnut Road, Sugarbush Road, Hiltonspoint Road North, Hiltonspoint Road West, Laxton Township Eighth Line, and Laxton Township Sixth Line. Uh, it's a, uh, uh, letter from Virginia Volick, and I need a note, I need a motion to receive the, uh, uh, the correspondence. Counselor Yo, seconder. Deputy Mayor McDonald. All in favor? And that's passed. Second piece of correspondence, item eight point two, is the design of the Colburn Street Bridge in Lindsay by Kathy Anderson, and I need a motion to receive that. Uh, Counselor Dobell and, and Deputy Mayor McDonald. Uh, Counselor Dobell, I think you wanted to talk to this, didn't you?
Um, I, I did, um, Mr. Mayor, thank you. However, um, I, I'm, all, all to say is I'm very pleased, uh, to see this letter and, uh, and, uh, to receive it. I will speak to it, I think more, it's probably more appropriate for me to speak to it at our council meeting.
That's great, thanks. We have a mover and seconder, all in favor? And that's passed. Now moving on to item nine is presentations, and our first presentation is on Coortha Lakes Tourism Brand Presentation. Uh, Ms. Lori McCarthy from Economic Development. Always great to see you, whenever you're ready.
Uh, thank you, Mary Onzeley, and I'm here today to share information on the new tourism brand we've created for Coortha Lakes. You will notice that the slide deck might look a little different than you're used to. This presentation has been designed to meet the new tourism brand. So... Uh, so to start, why we took on this project. As the destination marketing and management organization for Coortha Lakes, the Economic Development Division is responsible for destination marketing for the region. And while the existing jump-in brand works well for municipal communications, we recognized that a strong tourism brand with its own distinct identity will better position Coortha Lakes within the competitive tourism market. Also, developing a tourism-specific brand aligns with industry best practices and is essential for effective destination marketing. So with the strategic plan alignment, uh, this project fits with priority three, a vibrant and growing economy, within the goal to build economic development initiatives to support and expand existing businesses, attract new businesses, and expand local employment opportunities, and within that, the action to promote Coortha Lakes as a tourism destination. This project had six goals: to create a clear and memorable tourism identity, one that will reflect what makes the municipality unique and appealing to visitors; to support economic development through attracting visitors who contribute to local spending, business growth, and job creation; to reach and engage target audiences by aligning our messaging with the interests and expectations of key visitor segments; to enable consistent and effective marketing by providing tools and guidelines that support a unified promotion throughout all channels; to foster community pride and participation; to involve residents and stakeholders to ensure the brand reflects local values; and to ensure flexibility and long-term relevance; to design a brand to adapt over time to new opportunities and changing trends. So next is the brand development process, which included extensive stakeholder engagement, market research, a destination audit, industry trend analysis, and brand testing. This was our project team and collaborators on the project. We worked with a tourism agency called The New Business, who specialize in destination branding and marketing and have experience throughout Ontario, Canada, and the U.S. Our internal staff team consisted of myself and Rebecca Mustard from Economic Development, as well as Sherry Davidson and Kim Callahan from the Communications, Advertising, and Marketing Division. And external stakeholders that collaborated on the project involved tourism operators and local businesses, our chambers of commerce and BIA, as well as residents and visitors. Stakeholder engagement was a key component to the brand development process and included visitor surveys, industry surveys, stakeholder interviews, a stakeholder workshop, operator site visits, and concluded with a tourism partnership session we held last week to unveil the brand to our key stakeholders. The stakeholder engagement gave us a clear picture of how people experience Coortha Lakes. Five strong themes stood out: community, adventure, relaxation, welcoming, and innovation. And these became the foundation of our brand attributes. We grouped the feedback into two areas. The region's assets, like our outdoor activities, small towns, agriculture, our connection to the Trent Severn Waterway, and our proximity to urban centers, and the atmosphere, which people described as peaceful, friendly, creative, and full of community pride. These insights shaped a brand that's authentic to Coortha Lakes and meaningful to both locals and visitors. Stakeholders were also clear about what sets Coortha Lakes apart from other destinations. First, our proximity to the GTA. Second, we offer a more affordable, authentic alternative to Muskoka with small-town charm and wide appeal for families, couples, and adventure seekers. And finally, the mix of outdoor activities and small-town experiences give us a unique, under-the-radar charm that visitors really appreciate. Um, our, our primary audience live in urban centers, mostly in the GTA. They're curious, experience-driven people, drawn to nature, food, culture, and quality time. At the same time, they're feeling the downsides of city life. It's busy, noisy, and disconnected. Accessing nature isn't always easy, and many are looking for a quiet, more personal, meaningful escape. So now our new tourism brand. So the result of this work is our new tourism brand, Coortha Lakes Quietly Incredible. With the launch of the new Quietly Incredible brand, Coortha Lakes positions itself as an accessible, affordable, and unexpectedly remarkable getaway, standing apart from competitors like Muskoka and Prince Edward County. Rather than focusing on luxury or trends, we offer a more down-to-earth, yet equally rewarding experience. This understated charm will be the cornerstone of our new brand identity, inviting visitors to discover the region's remarkable experiences in a refreshing, low-key way. This is the visual identifier or logo for our new tourism brand. These are more versions of the brand logos, as well as simplified versions. And this is the brand promise. In the way that a humble friend suddenly displays a hidden talent, Coortha Lakes promises that our visitors will be enchanted and impressed by our everyday magical moments. Our constellation of friendly, historic small towns along the Trent Severn Waterway means you're never far from nature, adventure, peace, creative culture, and hospitality that makes this a place quietly incredible. There are five key brand messages. I won't read through all of them, but they include quietly incredible, even everyday memories here can be simply magical, more than lakes, we're connected by water, but we're also more than just lakes. Did you know we're a constellation of cute small towns too? These are various components of the brand, including color palettes, icons, and patterns we can use. And these are some examples of the brand in action. Uh, we have a mock-up of a subway ad and examples of merchandise. a subway ad and examples of merchandise and different ways we could use the brand. Here are some examples of use of the brand in tourism marketing. These are mock-ups of social media reels. And here are three examples of ways the brand could be used in various ads for tourism. And three more examples, showing the various ways we can utilize this brand message. So for next steps, as mentioned, last week we held a partner workshop, which was for the key stakeholders who participated in the interviews and workshop. We wanted to unveil the brand to those key stakeholders and get their feedback. And it was very successful. The feedback was positive and supportive, with our stakeholders saying that they felt connected to the brand, they could see themselves using it, and they were confident that it would be successful for tourism marketing. And following that is the launch of the brand. So we will officially be launching the brand on September 25th to coincide with the launch of the new websites, including the tourism website. Following that, there will be a month-long launch campaign, which includes a promotional video, a partnership with Destination Ontario, travel media promotions, digital advertising, local print advertising, and social media promotions. And we also have an operator toolkit and partnership opportunities to support the tourism industry businesses in leveraging our new brand and marketing. So I'll be working with our local businesses to help them be able to utilize and leverage this brand as well. And then following that, we will be executing our newly-developed two-year tourism marketing plan, beginning in 2026. This marketing plan aims to reintroduce the Coortle Lakes region as a quietly incredible destination. The plan builds on the existing destination development plan, which is our tourism strategy, and focuses on strengthening digital reach, seasonal promotion, storytelling, and collaboration. The marketing plan, just as the brand itself, were built based upon feedback and insights gained through the stakeholder engagement. And that's the end of the presentation. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Let's get a motion to receive the presentation. Councillor Richardson, Councillor Joyce. Councillor Richardson, you have a question?
Thank you. And through you, Mayor, maybe a question at the end of an observation. I was able to join you last week when you put that invitation out and presented to the stakeholders that were part of that engagement. And we had not seen the logo. And I mean, you went through the slides, and when that logo popped up, I smiled. Because for me, it resonated for the resident, but also for our tourists. I mean, it really encapsulated the fact that we are, you know, we have 250 lakes in this Coortle Lakes. We have these scenic trails. We have the constellations. We have that cultural background. I really, I was really impressed because it did resonate with me. Maybe one question is, when you were speaking with your stakeholders, did they feel that this particular brand would be something that they could intertwine with their own marketing and tourism components when they're pushing out, like for your chambers and whatnot?
Through the mayor to Councillor Richardson. Yes, from the stakeholders that have had the opportunity to see the brand so far, those who were able to attend that session, that was the feedback we received, was that they can see themselves being able to utilize it in their marketing, to that it's, it fits within their goals and their vision. And that was both from businesses and from the chambers of commerce. So the hope is that we will be able to work with other tourism operators and businesses to help them be able to utilize the brand as well, because that is the goal, is that it is something that all of our stakeholders can use and own, and we can all work together on promoting Coortle Lakes as a destination.
Thank you. Councillor Warren.
Through you. That was my question. So the logo, which is really neat. I like the water also. So Bob Cajun and Fenlin and other places can use that font and the design for, let's say, Bob Cajun, the destination.
Through the mayor to the councillor. Yes, that's what we hope will happen. So we, that brand toolkit that we will be sharing has information on the fonts, which are all Google fonts that anyone can access. And we will be providing the logo, the identifiers, any of those features that our partner organizations, tourism businesses want to utilize. We will provide that, but also I will be working with the businesses to help them do that. And our hope is that they will want to.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yeah, through you. Thank you very much today for your presentation. Well done. Born and raised here in this town, so it's really nice to see something new and fresh. During this, the whole thing, was signage and wayfinding discussed on every department, like, you know, Mimi and Bob Cajun and Fenlin and Lindsay for parking and stores? Is that coming out at the same time as all these changes? Because it's great to have all these changes, but if people don't know where they are or where to park and all that, is that, was that discussed?
Through the mayor to the councillor. Wayfinding was discussed in a very broad sense, in terms of recognizing there is a destination marketing component to wayfinding, but it is not part of this specific project. That being said, Rebecca Mustard was part of this project, as was Sherry Davidson, who are involved in the wayfinding project. So they are separate, and they aren't launching at the same time. But wayfinding was definitely recognized as part of destination marketing, and the right people were at the table for this project.
So we're still looking at that?
Through the mayor to the councillor. Yes, my understanding is that is still an ongoing project.
Thank you. And then, is there any dollars available for changing logos and so on? Is there any dollars available or grants or anything for businesses and so on to do that?
Through the mayor to the councillor. I know that our regional tourism organization, RTO8, has a partnership funding program that they release every spring. That is something that our tourism operators can tap into. Often, marketing-related expenses can be covered through that, which I know in the past has covered updates to their websites if they wanted to incorporate these sorts of elements into their websites. The next round of funding through RTO8 has not yet been released. So it could change, but that is one source of funding that in the past has been available to tourism businesses and organizations for this sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Yeo?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. Just kudos to the, when you put this together, that's fabulous branding. I love it. During your presentation, I noticed you had window on a window that looked like a subway train or something. And it brought to mind a question. And how far out are we reaching with our branding, advertising, and stuff to get people here? Are we in fact on the go-line or the TTC or are we hitting those areas?
Through the mayor to the councillor. The new tourism marketing plan, so our two-year marketing plan that we will start executing next year, is focused on the GTA and an Ontario-based market. One of, some of the feedback we did receive through this process was an interest from our stakeholders to also see us branch into the US with our marketing. That isn't something you'll see immediately in this two-year plan. It is focused on Ontario-based and very much in the GTA. The specifics of exactly where the advertising will go, for instance, TTC or subway ads, we haven't defined yet. So could be something we do, but that market, that GTA market, is very much where the focus is. I can say in the past, we have done advertising in the path in Toronto, the pathway and those ads. So it is something we've done in the past, and could, if there's a good opportunity there, it is something we could explore.
And that's great. Yeah, and I would, I wouldn't suggest that American plans were at least another three years.
Thank you. Councillor Joyce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I just wanted to provide some commentary that I've been involved in many branding and rebranding exercises over the years, and quite often, so many people have fallen into the trap. For example, you can't print pumpkin orange in CMYK or yellow doesn't, can't grayscale yellow. When I turned the page and saw your logo, I, let me just say, there's always naysayers, but in my opinion, two thumbs up. I thought it was an excellent logo. It's really eye-catching and grabs you, and I love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ashmore?
Thank you. Through you to Laurie. Thanks for coming and thanks for the presentation. Just a, a while back, we talked about when people come in by vehicle, when they come into the city core of the lakes, they see the signs. And would this be part of the rebranding of updating those signs? You know, we still see whether you're coming in from Semple Street to Manila or to Little Britton Road, or coming from the, coming from the south to the north, Mossport Road, or Fowler's Corners, or coming from Minden to the south. There's more entrance points, but, you know, we still have the older logos on the signs, and we have 73,000 people that live here. But, which is more than that. But just wondering if that's part of the, we talked about welcome centers. I know we can't have people in the welcome centers or construct welcome centers, but maybe rejuvenating these signs with the new logos. Would you include the new, our logo that we have here as well as the logo that you introduced today? Or would it be just one logo? Or would it be two logos that we'd have to put on a sign?
Through the mayor to the councillor. That is something that I don't have as part of this presentation, but we did look at the logos together. And as part of this process ensured that elements of the Jump-In logo and this new Explore Coortle Lakes logo, that they work together so that if we were to use them together, we can do so. There aren't plans at this exact moment to use both logos side by side or together, but we certainly can. And as for entrance signage, that's something I would refer to our Sherry and our communications department on. It is outside the scope of this immediate project. Might be something that happens eventually. I can't speak to that, but it is something, again, that we worked closely with our communications department on this project. So the two could work together, or they could work on their own. And to the comment about the visitor information centers or welcoming centers, we do have visitor information centers at all of our chambers of commerce, which is why it was wonderful to have those chambers involved in this process, because you will see this brand come out through the visitor information centers, which act as our welcoming centers.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really love Quietly Incredible. And I hope Quietly Incredible is going to make a big noise. So we have a motion to receive. All in favor? And that's passed. Thank you so much for your presentation. Moving on in our agenda, item nine point two is the Logie Street and Rideout Street Sewage Pumping Station. Ah, before, just hang in there. No, you're okay. But just hang in there a minute. Skip something. I need a motion that the report that accompanies that presentation be received and forwarded to council. Councillor Richardson, Councillor Warren, all in favor? And that's passed. Thank you. Nine point two, Logie Street and Rideout Street Sewage Pumping Station upgrades, environmental assessment completion. We go from branding to sewage pumping stations. That's very eclectic. And we have with us Nefir Rahman, who is the supervisor of environmental capital projects. You're by yourself, or you have colleagues online?
Yeah, we have a consultant online, too.
Okay. Whenever you're ready, go ahead. Well, we have the three amigos up there right now, but whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The servicing study identified the need to upgrade the Logie Street and Rideout Street Sewage Pumping Stations to accommodate the forecasted growth due to a couple of ministers joining orders and other development proposals within the southeast area of Lindsay. City retained the consulting firm, Gia Galway Group, to undertake a Schedule B municipal class environmental assessment EA study for the proposed upgrades. The EA study is now complete, and a project file report has been prepared for review and comment by stakeholders pending council endorsement. Now I pass over to Janort Sinakandu, project manager for this project from Gia Galway Group, to provide a brief presentation on the study findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Nefir. So hello, everyone. I'm Janort Sinakandu with Gia Galway, and we're the engineering consultants for the environmental assessment, detailed design, and tender of upgrades for Logie Street and Rideout Street Sewage Pumping Stations. And in this presentation, I'll be summarizing the EA process for this project. Next slide, The city initiated a planning process to upgrade the wastewater collection system for the community of Lindsay, and this is a response to new developments within the southeastern area of Lindsay, which requires upgrades to the wastewater collection systems. And this project specifically focuses on Logie Street Sewage Pumping Station and Rideout Street Sewage Pumping Station. This is because Logie Street Station flows are connected to Rideout Station, and both stations service the southeastern area of Lindsay. So based on the assessment of our future flows, one or both of these stations will require upgrades. A public information center was held on May 29th of this year, where the proposed alternatives were presented and questions and concerns were addressed. And the draft EA project file report has also now been completed and submitted to the ministry for review and comment, should the council endorse this report. Following the ministry's review, a notice of completion will be issued, and the report will be filed with the ministry and made available to review agencies and the public for a review period of 30 days. And this review period allows the public and review agencies to express any concerns and request additional levels of assessment where it's required. Next slide, please. This chart provides a summary of the class EA process, and these are the steps that we followed through for a Schedule B class EA process. Schedule B is typically for any major upgrades or expansions to existing infrastructure, which this project involves major upgrades to Lindsay wastewater collection system. We've completed consultants, we've completed consultations with relevant, with all relevant stakeholders, and we're currently now at the stage circled in red, where we're preparing to issue the notice of completion and finalize the EA file report to be filed with the ministry. Next slide, please. So the following slides will present our alternative solutions that we've considered, along with key maps illustrating each alternative. Alternative one is to do nothing and limit the growth. This is not a viable option, as the current system can't support the future developments, but it's something that we need to consider. Next slide, please. So this map illustrates the current system's configurations. We have Logie Street Station that's pumping to a receiving manhole in Parkside Drive, where a gravity sewer and siphon system carries the wastewater across the river to Rideout Street Station. And Rideout Station then pumps its own receiving flows and Logie Street's flows together north to another receiving manhole on St. Davis and Needham Street, where from there, it will continue by gravity to the wastewater plant for treatment. And all parts of this existing system configuration, including the pumps, force main, gravity sewer, and siphon system, will need to be upgraded to support future developments. And this is why we've considered a different configuration for alternatives two and three. Next slide, please. Alternative two is a staged upgrade to Logie Street Sewage Pumping Station, along with minor upgrades to Rideout Street Station. Next slide, please. So this map illustrates the new configuration where Logie Street Sewage Pumping Station has a new, larger diameter force main that'll be constructed to connect to an existing abend enforcement located on Riverview Road. And this abend enforcement was previously connected to Rideout Street Station. Logie Street Station will also be upgraded with a larger wet well with larger capacity pumps. Initially, two larger pumps will be installed with space provided for a third, a future third pump to be installed. third pump to be installed. And this upgrade to, this interim upgrade to Logie Street Station is estimated to support up to an additional 2,700 new homes. Ultimately, to meet our full build-out requirements, Logie Street Station will require another future upgrade to add third pump, and also extend the new larger force main from Riverview Road up to the final discharge point at St. David and Needham. Additionally, as part of these upgrades, Rideout Street Station will also receive minor upgrades with new pumps and any associated electrical upgrades to support the future flows that are, will also be received by Rideout Station. Next slide, please. So Alternative 3 is very similar to Alternative 2. Alternative 3 would be a full upgrade of Logie Street Station with minor upgrades to Rideout Street Station. Next slide, please. So this map illustrates Alternative 3, which is the same configuration as Alternative 2, but with all upgrades for Logie Street Station done at the same time. This includes installing three new pumps at Logie Station and constructing the new larger force main for the full route from Logie Street Station up to the northern discharge point at St. Davis and Needham. Next slide, please. Now, Alternative 4 would be the full upgrades to both Logie Street Station and Rideout Street Station based on the current configuration. Next slide, please. So this map illustrates the upgrades to all components of the existing configuration. This will require new wet wells at both stations with, with much larger pumps at both stations, and a larger force main from Logie Street Station, and a larger upgraded gravity sewer and siphon system. So this option will have the largest, or sorry, the highest capital cost, capital and operating costs, along with the highest environmental impacts due to construction works that will need to be done at the river crossing. Next slide, please. So this table summarizes the various upgrades that are included with each of our considered alternatives, including the sizes and of the required force mains and the pump flows, along with the cost estimates that we've determined for each. Alternative 2 is the most economically viable option at a cost, at an estimated cost of $7 million. And Alternative 4 would be the most expensive option at an estimated $12.7 million. Next slide, please. So we've considered several different factors in the comparison and evaluations of each of our alternative solutions, which includes ability to meet flow capacity requirements, impacts on the neighborhood for noise, odor, and aesthetics, property acquisition and availability, expansion potential, ease of constructability, impacts on wildlife and archaeological resources, operability, and capital and operating costs. The most important factor for considering is if our alternatives can meet the flow capacity requirements, because if they cannot, then it's not a viable alternative. So this would immediately eliminate Alternative 1, which is the do-nothing-and-limit-growth option. Alternative 4 is also not considered to be a viable alternative due to the heavy environmental impacts, significantly higher costs, and the complexity of construction due to the construction works required around the river crossing. This was, Alternative 4 is the full upgrades to both stations using the, the current configuration. Based on this, Alternative 2 and 3 are considered to be the most viable alternatives, and between the two, Alternative 2 is our preferred alternative. Next slide, please. Alternative 2 is again the interim upgrade to Logie Street Station with minor upgrades to Rideout Station with the new configuration involving a new, newly constructed larger force main from Logie Street Station to the discharge point. So Alternative 2 is the most economically viable alternative, and it results in substantial cost savings in the short term compared to Alternative 3 by deferring the full force main upgrade. And the estimated savings are in the range of $1.7 million in the short term. Next slide, please. So consultations were completed as part of the EA process, including consultations with various agencies, First Nations groups, and the public. Records of all consultations have been included in our EA file report. Next slide, please. Various environmental studies and investigations were also completed during the EA process, which includes an environmental impact study, a Stage 1 and 2 archaeological assessment, and screening checklists for archaeological potential that were provided by the ministry. Additional investigations include a geotechnical and hydrogeological assessment that are currently underway, and a noise assessment for the station, which will be completed in the future as part of the design stage. Next slide, please. So this shows a preliminary site layout drawing for the Logie Street Sewage Pumping Station, and this shows the, the existing pumping station site with the existing infrastructure, along with a new proposed wet well, outdoor electrical equipment pad, and a new force main. This drawing only illustrates a basic concept of the preferred Alternative 2 solution, and the details will be developed during the detailed design stage of the project. Next slide, please. Finally, the next steps would be to finalize the project file report and issue the notice of completion, complete the review period and address any raised concerns, and proceed with completing the contract drawings and request for quotation documents prior to construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you staying on the line to answer some questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there questions for? Let's, limit our questions to the presentation, okay? And we'll get to the report in a minute. All right? Any questions on the presentation? Just one from me. In Alternative 2, you talk about down the road, we will have to add a third pump. Do you have a timeline for when that might happen?
Well, the, the initial upgrade will support up to 2,700 additional homes. It would depend on the schedule of the, of how the developments proceed, but we have an idea of how many additional homes we can support before the, the future upgrade will be required.
Okay. Just one other, and I'm not sure if you can answer it, or if Director Rojas or Director Bokaboom wants to comment on it. Will this all be done in one fell swoop, or is this a multi-year project?
I believe that it should all be done at once.
I think Director Rojas may, wants to say something as well. Go ahead, Juan.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. We have this in our draft 2026 budget, that I think you're going to see relatively soon through Budget Committee, being proposed for construction in 2026, the first phase.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, so thank you for the presentation. We'll move on to the report. I need a mover and seconder to receive the presentation. Deputy Mayor McDonald, Counselor Joyce, all in favor? And that passes. Thank you. Moving on to the report, you can see the recommendation is for Alternative 2, and so are there questions on the report? Deputy Mayor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you, through you. So as I'm looking at this with our Growth Master Plan, does this meet all, everything that we need for the future of all the build that we have on that site? It says 2,700 new homes. Is there any more than that going to be built? And if so, is it going to be a lot more expensive to, to do any upgrades after that, if we seem to need, need more at that time and years to come?
Director.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So Lindsay is very flat, so we have several pump stations that pump to the plant. So this quadrant is sort of bounded by Highway 36. So we have the Callahan MZO property, the Gateway MZO property, and then everything in between along Logie Street, along the river. So that's sort of the catchment area for both the Highway 7 pump station that pumps into the Rideout, to the Logie Street pump station that goes to the Rideout, that goes to the plant. So it sort of cascades down. Everything on the east side of 36, so the flatlands, goes to a different system. So this is bounded by 36, Highway 7, and Lindsay Street. Unless we expand south of 7, then we would need another pump station to go to cascade down. So for the foreseeable future, within our planning horizon, this is that ultimate urban area in this quadrant.
Okay. Any other? Counselor Perry.
Just to be clear procedurally, because in the past, I've had to take an extra look. So given the, the options, and I know in the report you talk about the 2026 capital budget, are we being asked in the option here to approve this outside of the budget process and make sure that funding arrives? Or to include this upgrade in the EA within budget considerations coming up this month until the end of the year?
It would still be in the budget considerations. What you're asked, what you're being asked to do is to support the second option as the preferred option if and when there is approval for the project.
I understand. Okay, just want to be clear. Thank you very much, Mayor, and for the report.
Thank you. Any other questions on the report? Did you want to say anything about the report, Director? No? Okay. So anybody want to move it as printed? Counselor Joyce and Counselor Dobell, you want to speak to it?
I'm not an engineer, but I thought that was well done and explained in layman's terms. I understand, you know, what's involved, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dobell, did you want to speak to it?
I, I don't think so, Mr. Mayor. It's, this is just something we need to do.
Thank you. I agree. I think it is something, and I mean, we don't know how fast 2,700 homes are going to get built, given the current market conditions. Doesn't look like they're going to get built by next year, anyway. So I think going forward with it makes a lot of sense, and it fits in with our providing infrastructure and planning ahead to meet the growth that's coming. So I, I think it's a good, a good option. Ms. Bokaboom, did you wish to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did just want to point out the financial consideration section. So while you're contemplating the 26 budget, this is proposed to be DC debenture finance, so therefore it would be financed over 30 years. You wouldn't be putting any cash out, you would simply be collecting development charges to repay the debt. So it's a bit of change in philosophy on our DC budgets, and that helps the streamlining and the affordability.
Thank you. So the motion is as printed, all in favor? And that passes. Thank you. Moving on to item 9.3, Traffic Calming Process Review. We have the very capable Mr. Kelly with us this afternoon to provide us with some insight on traffic calming devices before we get to some reports that request them. Thank you, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, to council. So the reports Traffic Management have submitted today are mostly in response to traffic calming requests. Staff acknowledge how committed and passionate council is, continues, and has been to road safety. It is in that spirit that this informational presentation is intended to provide an overview of the traffic calming process and to summarize the recommendations in the report that have been submitted to this agenda. You know what traffic calming is, but it's important to highlight that a key purpose of traffic calming is to restore the street to its intended function. Up till now, we generally follow the Transportation Association of Canada's guidelines to neighborhood traffic calming. I'm going to refer to that from now on as the TAC guidelines. And also to manage resources, we have required petitions to start this traffic calming request process, or council direction. We want to make this process easier, of course. The TAC guidelines provide ways to evaluate potential traffic calming measures based on the advantages and disadvantages of a particular measure against the intended function of the road. For example, on some collector or arterial roads, measures that reduce the amount of through traffic is actually a disadvantage, because traffic will be diverted to roads which may not have the capacity to handle them. But on a local road, reducing through traffic may be the whole point. So now that we're refreshed on a bit of the basics, let's discuss the latest procedures that we're doing for these reports. The 2025 Transportation Master Plan update included recommendations to establish clear traffic management policies. This includes a traffic calming policy framework to supplement the already mentioned TAC guidelines. This policy, along with a speed limit policy, all-way-stop policy, and vision zero policy, will be developed and presented for council consideration over, over time. While this policy is being developed, it is appropriate to follow the general framework in the master plan for new traffic management requests as they come in. The traffic management reports before you represent the first examples of using the new framework, where lessons learned can be used to fine-tune the new policies. We will be reviewing the traffic calming process for requests at Pleasant Point, Algen Street, Parkside Drive, and Golden Mile Road. The new process provides consistency and fairness in determining, determining whether traffic calming is warranted and how it is implemented. Its purpose is to improve neighborhood safety and livability through targeted speed and volume control. It will follow the guidelines from the Transportation Master Plan and the TAC guidelines. The evaluations will be based on context-sensitive scoring matrix. It will be community-driven. Public engagement will be an important part of this process. It will offer many tools for traffic calming and provide opportunity to deploy alternative measures. The flow chart shows the process, which will ultimately make traffic calming easier to request, easier to track, and easier to justify. So the process begins with pre-screening, and we have developed new pre-screening criteria. They are easier to achieve than our previous processes. But more importantly, they are easier to evaluate. A future objective, objective is to provide better customer surface, customer service by removing the requirement to submit a petition to at least receive an initial evaluation and response. Locations that pass all the pre-screening criteria move on to a scoring phase, where weighted scores are evaluated for speeds, volumes, pedestrian generators, presence of schools, shortcutting traffic, collisions, sidewalks, and sightlines. Alternative measures can be considered at locations that fail to meet the minimum scores. Locations that do meet the scoring threshold move on to a public consultation phase where traffic calming options are evaluated and selected. Then we budget, then design, then implement. The new pre-screening method shown here shows that Algen Street and Parkside Drive move on to the scoring phase, while physical traffic calming measures will not be considered for Pleasant Point or Golden Mile Road. However, alternative measures are still considered for for these, these locations. For the scoring phase, Parkside Drive is shown here, which meets the criteria for physical traffic calming measures. Again, alternative measures will be considered at the failed location, which is Algen Street. You can see in the scoring criteria, there are many ways to score high to account for site-specific safety needs. For example, we're looking at a range of points for speeds, more points for very high speeds, points for volumes, points for schools, collisions, and sightlines. Okay, so we established Parkside Drive met the new criteria for traffic calming. So what do we, what now? First is to consult with Public Works, Paramedic Services, and Fire Services. For example, when considering the options, Public Works expressed concern with the operational impacts of year-round flexible ballards. Then when considering traditional speed bumps, Paramedic and Fire Services advised they add to response times and have the potential to contribute to lasting adverse effects for patients with suspected fractures or brain injury. Great. So those are off the table. Knowing that, we can proceed with public consultation with the preferred option for Parkside, but many preferred options in the future, which are speed cushions. These are permanent asphalt, speed bumps with gaps allowing emergency vehicles to pass while forcing regular traffic to slow. So the next step for Parkside, for example, would be to engage the public with a community support survey to give them opportunity to support, oppose, modify the preferred option or request to modify the preferred option. We can set a minimum response rate and require a certain amount of support. If successful, again, then we budget, design, and install. Alternatively, if the location is in the five-year plan for resurfacing or reconstruction, traffic calming measures can be, become part of that project for areas that pass the criteria. For the locations that did not meet the pre-screening or scoring criteria for physical traffic calming, alternative measures were recommended in the reports. They include speed limit reductions for Pleasant Point. On Algen Street, we recommend heavy truck restrictions, as well as looking at optimizing the signal timing on Colburn Street to encourage more drivers to that corridor. And on Golden Mile Road, we're looking at speed limit reductions and some pedestrian warning signs. To support all the recommendations, the temporary deployment of an electronic speed radar sign will be scheduled for all the roads. Oops. Yeah, I hope that kind of, I blasted you guys with a lot of traffic calming requests. We were about at our limit for the amount we could do in a quarter, and they're all coming to you at the same time. So I hope this presentation is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have a couple of questions here. First of all, can I get a motion to receive the presentation, Deputy Mayor McDonald, Counselor Dobell? And questions, Counsel Richardson?
Thank you through you. Thank you, Joe, very much for this report. It really does provide education to us and, of course, the residents that are listening. If you're able to maybe even share that pre-screening tool with us in the criteria, because I feel like a lot of times us sitting around the table when we're asked these questions, if we can provide the right rationale and education, the resident understands better too, because we are, like you said, following the TAC. And, and we have guidelines we have to follow. When you looked at the physical ways of providing traffic calming, did the rumble strips or the transverse markings, the ones that create that vibrationous sound, looked at? Because I've seen other municipalities use them, and I was just wondering, they may be cost-effective, may not have as many barriers. I just was, your, your spin on that?
Yeah, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Richardson. Absolutely. The, the guidelines have a whole box of measures that could be evaluated based on the road type, the roadside environment, and what, what we're actually trying to achieve. So rumble strips are a great example of something to put on a rural arterial road where we actually want the traffic to go through. We just need them to slow down a little bit, things like that. It's pretty cost-effective. Whereas if you're looking in downtown Lindsay, it's, it's not quite the same effectiveness. So I didn't present the whole toolbox, but it's all, it, it's very site-specific, but there's a lot of measures that could be used physically, road markings, signage, as well as education. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yeah, through you. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. A great report. I think everybody on this table here has issues and so on. So this is a really good start on how we're going to proceed in the future. Question, how long does it take this process to take place?
Thank you through Mr. Mayor to Deputy Mayor McDonald. So the process, it usually the, the summer months, we're blitzing data collection for all the requests that are in. Then we are analyzing that data, and then we end up, like today, where we have all our, this is what we did this summer. Here, here's the findings. Then the next step is for, like Parkside, where, where it passed the criteria, the next phase is to, to community engagement and then budget, design. And I don't have the timelines for that, but I imagine it'll be, the request comes in one year, the engagement happens, and the analysis and engagement happens in the one year, and the next year is design, selection of the measure, and budget. And then the next year is construction. That's, you know.
Thank you for that. And these speed cushions and so on that you talk about, how is that for plowing the roads and so on? Is that, does that suit plowing the roads?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. They are certainly more suitable than some other measures. They, I don't know if Director, or sorry, Oliver would want to speak to that?
Yeah, so speed cushions, oh, sorry, through you to the counselor. Speed cushions, speed humps, raised intersections, these are all things we can plow with.
Thank you for that. That's great. And every one of these are all a budget item, correct? Because you don't, you have a budget or?
Thank you. They could either be a future capital budget, or if you want, there's no dedicated traffic calming budget at the moment. So it would be the dedicated capital project for each, each project, yes.
And one really important thing you said at the last, that every time we do things like that, and you do your study and the process and so on, you have a lot of tools in your toolbox. So there's other things that you didn't mention today that also could be a calming thing too, that you could, right, correct?
Absolutely. There, there's a vast list of things we could do, depending on what we're trying to achieve, what type of road it is, and what the roadside environment is. They're in much more detail in the actual policy when we bring it to you. Yeah, and in the guidelines. Thanks.
Thanks very much for your report. Good job.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you too. Joe, thanks for the report, and thanks for all your work you do, and you do it very efficiently, and, and you're always accessible to talk to. And just wanted to mention about those, those raised speed cushions. I know one, the one on King Street here in Lindsay, sort of getting used to that one there when I go out of town to thirty-six. And it's, it's actually quite, I think it's quite effective. Like it does, like it doesn't jolt you too much, and it certainly does its purpose. So they're kind of neat how those are, how those are engineered and sloped. As far as the public engagement, how does that work then? Once, once council or once petition starts the whole process, how do you engage? How does the public, how are they able to input their opinions or members of council or have you, the public? How do you gather that information? And when does that occur? And what type of methods do you use to gather that information? Please?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Ashmore. We, I anticipate the policy will, will, will overview the type of public engagement that's required. I'm anticipating that to make things easier to go through, to get to the initial valuation, we will be removing the petition requirement. Whereas anybody can just fill out a form on the website, that's the ultimate goal. And then it will be evaluated quickly. They will get, for pre-screening, sorry, and then they will get word of what happened next or other options. For projects or locations that move on to the scoring phase, then we're already justified into scheduling the work to collect the data, whereas before we required, we needed guidance from council or direction. And then when it's time to select the traffic calming measure, I anticipate a survey letter to effective, affected residents asking for their opinion.
Thanks. So it's similar to streetlights when you, when we mention an area, and then you, you can, you don't have to have council's direction. You can, you can go and, and start working on warrants for that, like you, at your discretion, like you don't have to come back to council?
That's the goal. So yeah, the streetlight has a policy for it, so that it, when it, that's pretty clear. Whenever a request comes in, we do the initial warrants, and it either goes on to budget or, or kind of just dies. And we're anticipating this would be a similar process, more transparent, easier to follow, and have very clear guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dobell, I see, and I'll get to you in a minute. Director Rojas, did you have something?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of points that Supervisor Kelly mentioned. We are in the midst of undertaking a robust traffic policy. So that's forthcoming. We're doing this in the interim, and the lessons learned from this will, will feed into that robust policy coming in the future, most likely next year. As part of our capital project, we do have a program titled Traffic Signals and Streetlights. They're mainly for traffic signals and streetlights, but we do have a category for miscellaneous traffic signal components, which sometimes we utilize these undertakings in there. We've carried a modest amount in 2025 of seventy-five thousand, but we are looking through the budget process to expand that. Wherever possible, the traffic calming, the traffic calming solution would be implemented as part of the reconstruction project. If it's, again, as Supervisor Kelly mentioned, if it's within our five-year plan, we might as well just incorporate right in the design, because the design of that road or the reconstruction of that road has a public consultation process. We look at active transportation. We look at traffic calming policies. Everything that council sort of has a plan for, we use the opportunity when we reconstruct the road to capture as much as possible. We might not get it all, but at least we evaluate it and make recommendation. So where, where it's failing the five-year plan, or it's not in the five-year plan, and there is no plan for it, and it just comes sort of out of the blue, we are, we are looking at beefing up the traffic, traffic signal and streetlight budget to accommodate some of these requests. And as Supervisor Kelly mentioned, we've had, I think, a record year in 2025 for the amount of traffic-related speeding or calming requests that have come in.
Thank you. Counselor Dobell?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly, for, for, for the presentation. Again, some very useful information for a new counselor like me, wanting to be able to respond to, this is unquestionably the most common complaint or issue raised with me from the constituents in Ward Five at least, and I'm sure I'm not alone amongst the counselors with, in that regard. One of the things I, I didn't, maybe I missed on it, and maybe it wasn't touched on, but, but always stops, are they considered a traffic calming measure? Or is that, is, or is an always stop a different, a different kind of, a different kind of measure?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Dobell. Thank you for the question. It's, it's a very public, sorry. People think that it's, it's a great tool for traffic calming. However, it's not a traffic calming measure. It's a right-of-way control. Provincial guidelines are clear that they should not be used to calm traffic, particularly when the safety of children is concerned. It could just, it creates corridor problems, false sense of security. Then you have people starting to ignore other stops where they feel, people can just feel when an always stop is not really warranted, and they start making poor decisions. And so there are other ways to calm traffic besides always stops. But we do have a process to evaluate always stops based on the volumes and the right-of-way demands.
Thank you for that. And I'm, I'm just, just want to be clear, because I, it was, it was my understanding that we were doing a warrant on the corner of Sussex and Francis Street, in terms of the potential for an always stop. That would be, that would have been included in a different report, or that, that wouldn't, that's the reason, first of all, am I correct in terms of the fact that I'm, that, that I am anticipating the, that, that warrant process to be completed sometime soon? But given the fact, and I was interested that you, you, you say that that's not necessarily a, a traffic calming measure per se, and I understand why you say that. One of the things that I didn't see anything on was, was the, 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 the speed monitors, the solar-powered speed monitors that broadcast your speed as you approach, as you, as you approach the monitor. Have, are we looking in, at using those things? And while I'm asking that question, speed cameras in, in community safety zones, are they under consideration? Despite the fact that I understand that as recently as today, our premier has voiced his opinion about speed cameras. But I'm interested to know if, if that's something that we are looking at.
Yes. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. To, to catch you up to speed, we do use the, the traffic, we call, we call them the speed radar boards usually. It just flashes your speed. We have a couple of traveling versions of those. We deploy throughout CKL when needed. There, there is no process. You ask for one, you will get it. It's just the timing when we put it up. We, we're not stringent with those. Council also passed recently to expand the speed board program to a permanent, permanent locations instead of the existing traveling ones. They will be budgeted probably coming soon. And I, one or two communities per year will, will receive permanent speed boards. As far as the automated enforcement cameras, currently staff has been directed to investigate the, what would be needed to get that implemented. Right now, I believe the legal team is, will update you in a future report because of the, the court, the court constraints for implementing something like that. Yeah. I hope that answers your question.
And last, yes, it does. Lastly, though, I would, I would echo the comments of my colleagues commanding you for this report. I'm, I'm very pleased particularly with the, with the findings and recommendations with respect to Elgen Street, and so I commend you for that. And also, I, I'm grateful to the, to the, to the, to the folks that, on Elgen Street that raised, raised this matter and, and the way in which they did it. So good stuff there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Joyce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thank you for a good presentation. You're whipping through the slides there a bit too, too fast for me to catch everything, so I may have missed this. I really, got two questions, and one is, the scoring matrix really caught my attention. Is, is that an industry-wide matrix? Is it from TAC? It is. Okay.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to the counselor. It, it's adopted from TAC. TAC does, it recommends that a scoring matrix be developed, doesn't say what or how. So many municipalities do their own. So as part of the Transportation Master Plan, we made it a key objective to develop these scoring matrices. So right So right now, it's, it's specific to our needs and our roads, and there's room, there's room to make it better. This is just a great transparent starting point.
I would agree with that. Thank you. I have a second question, just based on what you said just a moment ago on the speed boards being budgeted in a permanent, in permanent locations. That's my understanding, you had another presentation going back several months, that these speed boards are effective for the first three to four weeks, and then as residents get used to it, they're, the effectiveness drops precipitously. So why would we put in permanent speed boards? I like mobile way better.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that's, that's, is true. The effectiveness does drop. However, some of these speed boards, we can change out what it does, what it says. We could flash them with a light, we can say slow down, we can then put a happy face, a sad face, a thumbs down, kind of so that it's different every so often. You're right, the effectiveness will always decrease as the longer it's up. But there's some locations, such as some places in, let's say it's off of Simcoe Street, where the volumes are so great, the speeds are so fast, that we just probably should have something permanently that says slow down. And if time, as time goes, if they're not effective, we certainly have a toolbox for more permanent measures. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Warren.
Through you. And so is that the same as the Black Cat? Like at the O P P meeting, we were talking about Black Cats. So I guess we're going to be working together?
More or less. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Black Cats are a data collection device. So right now, we're using the old hose method, where you have two hoses, the car goes over it, it pushes air into a sensor, and then it does some math between the air hit from one hose to another, it can tell you the speed. They're pretty effective. We will be introducing a budget to modernize the equipment that we use to collect data, and that includes Black Cats. It's just a more modern, less, it's much more safe to deploy, you don't have to get out on the roadside, and we can use them all winter. So it'll increase our efficiency, yeah.
And I'm really happy with my lights and Bob Cage, and that slowed everything down.
Thank you. Council Perry.
Thanks very much, and thanks for the report, and I'd echo Council Ashmore's comments for the good work you do, Joe, and also being so accessible to helping us all. Just one thing, again, my through line on personal responsibility and people slowing down. We were great to get one of the digital speed boards in, on a nice stroke, straight paved road in Ward Three, further to constituents' requests. A few days later, I received phone calls to please have the digital sign removed because drivers were trying to post a high score on the digitization. So again, that kind of, that frustrating, what's the word I'm looking for, nihilism of trying to address the speeding issue here locally, and where the, in my view, the responsibility ultimately lies, so hard to change. Just very quickly, if I could, following up on the photo radar, the automated speed enforcement, that was just, I think, about a year or so ago that Council Richardson and I brought forward that memo, and I know, Joe, you've been working on the group ask that didn't go through regionally. I'm expecting that the costing will be done, and we will be putting an item in this year's budget submission for 2026, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Councilor. So the best courts of action, since the group buy that we were investigating kind of fell through, it was determined that we need to split up the administrative monetary penalty component that is required to free up the court resources with the automated enforcement requirement. They're related, but separate. The corporate needs, we would have to put in the administrative penalty system, should be developed through the departments that have the most knowledge on the matter, which is the legal department, and they will be reporting to you on their next steps for that. Engineering will be part of the process, and back fully on board when we get to the time to actually put in the automated speed enforcement cameras.
Okay, so I'll be in touch with you then, and with Robin, and with Juan about the costing for inclusion, even as a, as an estimate for the budget this year as a priority, as councilor. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Just remember, Council Perry, you can't cure stupid. Moving on, we have a mover.
People tell me that all the time, Mayor. I don't understand. I get that comment a lot. I don't know, maybe one day. Thank you.
Okay. We have a mover and secondor to receive the presentation. All in favor? And that passes. Thank you. Did you guys want a break? We only, we have two extractions from consent. Or do you want to keep going? Okay, we'll keep going. Consent matters. Motion that all of the proposed recommendations shown in Section 10.1 of the agenda be approved by the committee of the whole, in the order that they appear on the agenda sequentially numbered and forwarded to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting, save and except 10-15 and 10-18. I have a mover and secondor. Let me get somebody on Zoom. Councilor Yeo and Councilor Doble. All in favor? And that passes. 10-15 is request for traffic calming Pleasant Point Road and Rose Street. Council Ashmore, that's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll receive this. And just wanted to thank council for approving this report in my absence, and it's an incredibly detailed report. And I wanted to thank senior engineering technician, Mr. Archibald, and of course, Supervisor Kelly. One little question is, in this case here with Pleasant Point, through you two, direct to Supervisor Kelly, would this be a good candidate for, I know we're going to be doing a lot of great things here in Pleasant Point community, but would this be a good candidate for a community safety zone on that stretch? Would that add to it even more, or does that, or is it necessary with the, with these extra traffic calming measures that we're going to be putting in?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Community safety zones are ineffective without heavy enforcement. It's just a sign that says fines are doubled. If they're not getting fines, they don't care. Another point is that some of the traffic on Pleasant Point is showing an acceptable compliance with the speed limit. There is other tools in the box we could use besides community safety zones, such as the speed board flashes, and however, that is, the community safety zones do require a bylaw, and that is something council could pursue if they choose.
Okay, and just one last question, please. When we talked about this just briefly yesterday, you had mentioned that, or some people had asked, well, what about a stop sign or a yield sign at the corner of Snug Harbor Road and Pleasant Point Road? But you had indicated that, of course, Pleasant Point Road is an arterial road, so we can't really do that then? Just to, at that, that's quite a ways north, but still, that's a different process, is it, to get, to get that stop sign there? But in your opinion, because it's an arterial road, it wouldn't really be applicable there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So stop signs are applicable when the right-of-way, the volumes show a need to control the right-of-way. I don't think it's applicable here, because the right-of-way is controlled properly with, with Road 36, I believe, being the through road. Perhaps you're thinking of something else? Are you talking about the speed reduction and a stop sign?
No, Snug Harbor Road and Pleasant Point Road, which is halfway down. Pleasant Point Road starts at Highway 36.
Sorry, my apologies. I remember our conversation. Yes, I don't believe the volumes would show that a stop or yield would be warranted based on the demands for the right-of-way.
Thank you. I'll move as printed.
As printed. You, sir, a secondor for this? Council Warren. Did you want to speak to it at all, or?
No, I'm fine, thanks. I know we get comments from the residents, well, can you do this? Can you do that? But I mean, I think we've done a lot here, because this is much more than what I had expected, and I think quite frankly, it's more than what I would ever expect, and I think what most people are quite receptive and grateful that we've, and appreciative that this is coming. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Council Warren, do you want to talk to it? No? Okay, we got a mover and secondor, all in favor? And that passes. Moving on to 10-18, and Council Doble, that's your extraction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say that I'm very, very pleased at this recommendation and the finding. I'd like to express my, my kudos and thanks to Susan Hunter, who lives and works in that area, and she has, she put a lot of footwork into putting this request in. As I, I read through the report, and perhaps Supervisor Kelly can help me, as I, my understanding is that you looked at both St. Patrick Street and St. Paul Street, but, but the criteria was met at St. Patrick Street, but not quite at St. Paul. And if I read, if I'm reading between the lines, is it suggested that sometime in the future, St. Paul Street might be under further consideration?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor.
Or is that just wishful reading?
Yeah, so, apologies for making you read between the lines. Basically, the, the warrant states where there's pedestrian desire lines, we should consider crossings. Whereas the crossing at where the school is, is outright met. The other crossings that we also had a public cases calling in to request, above and beyond the petition that was received. So we did look into it. There is a demand there, however, how much demand remains to be seen. So although not outright met, there could be future demand that we would need to look at. Yeah.
Thank you for that, and I'm, I'm, I'm very, I will say, though, that I am, I'm very pleased with that. So I'm happy to make the recommendation that this, make the motion that this recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting.
You're moving it as printed. I take it.
Yes.
Thank you. Sir, a secondor? Deputy Mayor McDonald. Did you want to speak further to it, or you're good?
I'm good.
Deputy Mayor McDonald? Fine. All in favor? And that's passed. We have no items extracted, and we have no new or other business have a motion to adjourn. Councilor Yeo and Council Joyce. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I remember September 23rd is Orange T-shirt Day, and we're looking for one for you, Council Doble, so.